Thank you, everybody. We're ready to go. Welcome, West Orange, to our September 5th, 2017 council meeting. It's the fifteenth council meeting of the year. I want to start out by apologizing to our many honored esteemed guests here for me being a couple of minutes late. I apologize, but we will move along very quickly to get to you guys. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28th, 2016, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8th, 2016. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Garino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Krakowiek?
Present. We had invited Mr. Derek Jeter and Mr. Aaron Judge, who both expressed their desire to come out and help with the celebration here, but they were unable to make it. I want to... Councilwoman Castellino, this is your honoring. Are you ready to go?
All set, Council President.
Okay, please.
Raise your hand if you are all ready to go back to school. I see all the parents' hands raised. I miss this time of year. Okay, I'm sure you're all gonna have a great year, because I know all of you have had a great summer. Playing summer baseball, not an easy task. We had the older players in last month, and it's a lot of commitment and time on your part, working in the heat, giving up some of your summer beach days, but you all worked really hard, and because of that, you really accomplished a lot this year. I had the pleasure of visiting the PAL one night. I think you were playing, oh, Down Neck? Yeah, right, Down Neck? And I have to say, you nine-year-olds, you were awesome that evening. I saw you make some plays. It was a great game, and you should really be proud of yourselves. The level of baseball has risen. My kids were younger. My boys had played for the PAL through the high school, and just seeing the level of competition rise and play, especially at the ages that you're at, you should all congratulate yourself with great success that you're having here with the program. So, great job. So what we're gonna do is, I am going to first call up the nine U coaches, our head coach Todd Church, assistant coaches Otto Teresi and Pat Neko. If you could please come up and stand here for a minute while I read our citation. So let's talk a little bit about this great season that you had. "The West Orange PAL nine-U travel baseball team had seven wins and five losses in the regular season. On July 28th, 2017, they won the Cedar Grove National Division Championship in a great game against Down Neck Express North with a final score of 1 to 0. It was a true Little League baseball at its finest, with every player giving it their all. These young men are a very special group. They are very talented baseball players and shine both on and off the baseball field. They regularly attend other travel teams' games to show support and participate in fundraisers throughout the West Orange community. The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize and congratulate the team on their excellent sportsmanship and wishes them continued success in the future." Coach, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Council. Thank you for the town and the PAL coming together to help the youth of West Orange, provide them with a lot of good experiences and a good baseball program. So we thank you guys for allowing that. Appreciate that. West Orange is getting really, really good in baseball, and it's a nice relationship with the PAL and the township, so thank you for that. Also, I want to thank the parents for supporting their kids, and I want to thank the kids themselves for doing such a great job, because they have to work pretty much throughout the year. They have a couple of months off in the winter, and other than that, they're at it all year round, and the fruits of your labor are paying off. You guys are doing really well, so we're very proud of you guys, okay? So, who should give you guys a hand? The kids are really what made it, and we appreciate all your efforts. So now, I'll call up each player, and when I call your name, there's enough room there, I noticed, that you guys can get by, so whatever name I call, just, you know, Connie, let the person get by you and come on up, okay? So the first person, number eight, Patrick Castles. Stay right there, bud. Number fourteen, Miles Burton. Number four, Jordan Rothstein. Number twelve, Jay Stevenson. Number three, Shepard Stevenson. They're twins, so the town council, they're twins. I don't know if you can tell. Number one, Riley Neko. Number two, Noah Gattens. Number thirteen, Riley Sullivan. Number ten, Kevin Malone. Number seven, Brandon Chen. And number fifteen, Jack Pim. Thank you guys very much for a great year.
Okay. It just wasn't a great summer for the nine U or the eighteen U, but also for our eleven U's. But before I congratulate, we congratulate them, it would be remiss of me if I didn't congratulate the organization and all the hard work, especially two folks that have really been working hard with the baseball, and that'd be Cheryl Merkinger and Rob Close. I know they don't want to be recognized, but Cheryl has turned social media into such a positive here in the township, and for that, she's grown programs for the PAL and gone out great press, and we thank you for that, Cheryl, for all your hard work. If I could have the head coach, John Strozick, and his assistants, Coach Mohammed Stewart, Chuck Young, and James Shadwell. Gentlemen, congratulations. The West Orange PAL eleven-U travel baseball team had eleven wins and one loss in their USABL regular season. On June 17th and 18th, 2017, a total of 144 games participated, teams, I'm sorry, 144 teams participated in the USABL playoffs throughout New Jersey. The eleven-U team played two rounds in the playoffs with the first round by as the first-place team. They competed against Greenbrook in the second game of the playoffs and won by a score of 15 to 2 to advance to championship. The team played against Weehawken in the final championship, ran a Colgate Field on June 18th, 2017. The West Orange PAL eleven-U travel baseball team won the United States Amateur Baseball League National North Division Championship with a final score of 8 to 6. The young men participating in the West Orange PAL travel baseball program developed friendships that reach beyond their schools. They achieve a sense of responsibility to a team and realize their contributions assist in the success of a team. These are valuable lessons that can be applied to almost any situation in life. The West Orange Township Council is proud to recognize and congratulate the team on their excellent sportsmanship and wishes them continued success in the future.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate my boys and also the nine U on your season. My boys, you did, you had an unbelievable spring, positive summer, and I know a lot of you are coming right back, and we're gonna do it again in the fall. And I would like to thank the council, and I'd especially like to thank the PAL for the opportunity that they've given us to work with the boys. A lot of people might not be aware of this, but this is, for townships like us, it's almost a crisis time going on, because it's become, in a lot of areas, pay to play baseball, where any kid whose parents want to pony up the money, the kid can get on a team. And I've even gone that route myself in the past. Not that that's not, in some cases, a positive route, but what you fail to get when you do that is you fail to get to play with your neighbor next door. A lot of times, you fail to get to play with your buddies you see in the hallway at school. You don't get the same type of bonds you do, like you do with people right from our own town. And that's one of the most important things you can have at this age, is getting to walk the hallways and say, "You played a great game. That was a great hit you had. You got that last run across for us. You pitched awesome." The little things, the little nuances like that in baseball are what you're gonna remember long after, okay? However far you go with your baseball careers, and that's one of the things we want to do, is help keep and bring together baseball in West Orange, keep it together here, so that our high school can flourish and that the kids can experience baseball as far as they want to take it with their friends and with their families as their support. You know, it was very nice, and we appreciate the opportunity to get to work with the boys. Without any further ado, I'd like to say, you know, once again, thank you, and I guess we'll call up the players. As all my players know, I could go on and on. Some of the coaches can even tell. I can talk all day long, cuts into practice a lot, but the first... First player I'd like to bring up, actually, I'd like to thank my assistant coaches first, and I apologize for that. Chuck Young, Mohammed Stewart, and James Shadwell, who's sitting in the back there. Guess he forgot to bury his shoes, and he didn't come up here. All right, the first player we'd like to recognize with a lot of huge upside and potential Our next player, and a close neighbor of mine, is Bobby Duff. Bobby Duff. Come on up, Mr. Duff. This gentleman came a long way since he first started with us, Caleb Gattens. Next, we have Sean Harrington. What do you say, Sean? And kinda sad to say, we're gonna miss this gentleman in the fall. I'm just kinda calling you out there. Hope to see you back in the spring, of course. Jackson Lee, come on up, Jackson. Next player up, unfortunately, has moved out of our town, all right? But what he brought to our team, we're gonna remember, and his legacy is gonna live on every game we play. It's almost like you're still there, and that's gonna be John Shadwell. This guy's got some really soft hands, and I love the way he gets around the ball. You're looking at one of the potential shortstops in the future for our high school, if he comes to our high school, and that's Randy Stevens. This next player, I don't know where to start and where to end talking about him. I could talk about him all day and night, and that's because he has so much potential. I wish all of my kids would realize, you have more baseball ahead of you in your future if you choose to have it than you do behind you. And let that sink in, which means you can play as long as you want, as long as you put in the work, and this gentleman, so far, has been an exact, perfect example of willingness to put in the work, Amir Stewart. One of the cornerstones of our team, who is probably my biggest motivating factor beyond wanting to win, is getting to see the smile on all of our boys' faces, but also getting to see it in my own son's face. Makes me very proud to call Justin Strozick. Next, we have Elias Velez, who's stepped in at almost every position and helped out our team, and he's a great utility player for the future. The last player, I don't have too much of a problem making this statement. I think as long as he stays in our area and playing for West Orange, everybody here is gonna hear a lot about him, and that's because, rather than just talking the talk, he allows
That's a hard act to follow, but, Mr. Sears, we are ready for your update on redevelopment.
To be quite honest with you, I've been on vacation for the last seven or eight days, but I did go by today. Sidewalks are being put in, painting the outside of the building, it was very nice. Most of the windows are in one-sided, that one building. They're still working on the R over R, but it seems to be moving along pretty well.
No update on when might be leasing?
No, you know what? I tried to call him today, and he, unfortunately, we didn't get back to each other, so I don't know, but I will have some more information for you at the next meeting.
Any questions? I just had a quick question. I don't know if you have been focused on this since you've been out, but Prism is, once again, delinquent on their property taxes at 55 Lakeside Avenue, and I'm wondering, does that have any effect on Phase 1?
No, actually, Phase 1 is paid. Taxes were paid up. There's like two buildings, I think, that they're... I talked to him today. I called him when I got back, and he said he thought there was some glitch, because they pay us online now. For some reason, we didn't get the payment, it was due on the 28th, so I spoke to Mr. Diaz today, and he said he was gonna get everything taken care of. But everything on battery费 is paid. I think they owe about $68,000 on the other two properties, somewhere around there.
Yeah, I think it's actually more than just two properties. A lot of the, but the small properties that are delinquent are very small.
Yeah, actually, there's, I think there's numerous, number of properties. It's about $95,000.
Oh, I thought it was 68. My mistake, sorry.
Out of about $7 million outstanding.
I'm sorry, could you just speak into the microphone?
They owe about $95,000 for their properties, out of about $7 million that are still outstanding overall, so, not from them.
From everybody. Any other comments, questions?
No, the facade looks nice that they're putting on. I like that.
Next on the agenda is council liaison announcements. Is anyone... Councilwoman McCartney, please.
Thank you. The planning board is to meet tomorrow here in council chambers, and on our agenda, we have the Crestmont Country Club coming in. They're trying to create a bubble for private tennis lessons. That's on the agenda, and a resolution for the courtesy hearing at the Turtleback Zoo for their new flamingo exhibit. There will be a West Orange multi-chamber of commerce networking event at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park next Wednesday, September 13th, at 5:30 to 7:30. The business owners or organizations in town, if you'd like to come out and introduce yourself and your services or your business, please, you're invited to attend. Also, at the Thomas Edison National Historic Park on Saturday, October 14th, will be the annual Muckers Bowl. Thomas Edison called his workers muckers when he wanted them to work through the night on a special experiment or invention, so we continue that. And he brought in food from local foods places in town, so we're doing the same. We've been doing that for four years now. So this is from the Friends of Edison, Thomas Edison National Historic Park, Saturday, October 14th. For more information, please visit friendsofedison.org for ticket information. I see Rodolfo is here. I think you're going to talk about the West Orange Arts Council upcoming exhibit for the West Orange Historic Foundation starting next week. And the West Orange Environmental Commission has been meeting over the summer on two projects. One is the assessments and surveys for solar carports at our municipal buildings and some of the Board of Ed buildings, so we're waiting to hear back on any type of conservation and savings tax dollars for that. And just today, I picked up a report from the New Jersey Clean Energy Program. We're looking into any upgrades that are already in the works, and if the township gets involved with the New Jersey Clean Energy Program, there is a 70% to 30% match, which would save the New Jersey Clean Energy, provides a 70%, the township would have to match the 30% on all, any type of energy-saving upgrades. So that looks very promising, and we'll hear more about that at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb.
Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to make mention that September 24th is the annual Mayor's 5K Walk Run for Women's Ovarian Cancer. We hope you'll all come out and support it, cheer on the walkers and runners, and sign up and register and be a part of it. To register and get more information, you can visit the Downtown West Orange website through the township website, or www.downtownwo.com to register for the Walk Run. It's a great event. We need volunteers. We look forward to it. It's right in front of Town Hall, so we'd like to see as many people come out to support a very, very important health issue for many, many women, and it'd be good to show how West Orange continually cares about this disease. Also, another note, on September 8th, 9th, and 10th, West Orange again hosts the 16th Annual Essex Falls Soccer Tournament, which is our combined tournament with Livingston and the West Orange United Soccer Club. There'll be 180 teams from all over the tri-state area. The tournaments in West Orange, games will be held at Lincoln Field and at the baseball field at the West Orange High School Sports Complex, and at O'Connor Field up on Mount Pleasant. So we look for you to come. There's no charge to come see these great players play from all over the tri-state area, and come out. There's gonna be a raffle for fantastic Devils tickets, for Red Bulls tickets, and gift certificates for Nike. It's unbelievable, so come on out and support the funds and the revenues that are raised helps offset the cost for running our soccer program in the township of West Orange, and this is our 16th tournament, so it's really going strong. Next will be on September 14th at 7:30 at night at the Essex County Center at the Turtleback Zoo is our monthly West Orange Protestant Safety Advisory Board. We hope you'll all come out to attend to give us your input. Hopefully, if the drawings and the specs are done, we'll have a quick overview for the Main Street redevelopment, for the streetscape for Main Street, and the mid-block crosswalks at Edison Middle School. So we're looking forward to people to come out. We want your input, and we can give you some update. Hopefully, the drawings are done, we'll be able to show the drawings at this meeting. So that's September 14th, 7:30 at night at the Essex County Center, Educational Center at Turtleback Zoo. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Who's next? Councilman?
No, not ready yet?
Councilwoman?
Okay, yes, thank you, Council President. As you saw, we had the PAL here congratulating them as well. They had a successful golf tournament. Thank you all who participated. Give a shout-out to my husband who ran that golf tournament. He did a great job, and he wanted me to mention publicly. He appreciated, and the board appreciated, all of our firefighters and police officers who came out to support that event. Many of them themselves were PAL kids, so, nice event, as Councilman Garino just mentioned, with the other mountaintop event. Now, these sports programs can't be successful without donations from the public, so come out, support our youth teams. This is the time of year, especially the fall, lots going on. Even at our high school teams and booster clubs, you'll see them washing cars, so this has always been a generous community, so if everybody could come out and support the youth teams, it will go to a great cause. Switching gears to our senior citizen survey update, today, we had the Health Department had the senior citizen picnic down at the town pool. They had a great trio singing the Andrews Sisters songs today. Really, really lovely pool day and lovely event. What was great about it as well, a lot of folks took the survey with them. The Health Department's been busy. I have to give kudos to Patty Duffy and Susan Iovino. They've been out there, going to all the senior houses, they're meeting with the senior clubs that will be coming next week, and so we're, little by little, we're getting the word out. Most folks like the PDF copy. We're trying to get some folks acclimated to the computer, but big thanks to Stephen Zekella and his mountaineers at the high school. They were kind enough to meet with us. Past two weeks, we trained the students at the high school, how to show them how to go online to help the residents, and we have two dates, September 13th and October 16th, set up that the Health Department will be... October 16th, set up that the Health Department will be advertising, that anyone who'd like to participate, come up to the high school to work with the mountaineers and their mentoring program, to work with them, you could either put the, sit with the kids to do the survey online, if you've done the survey already, you're also invited up for some tech support and some chair yoga, so that event's being advertised this week, and transportation will be provided. So unfortunately, we didn't get the ARP grant that we applied for, but they, Director De Nova worked it out in her budget, we're able to transport our residents up for these two events, and folks could call Transportation at 973-325-4120, reach out if you'd like transportation up to West Orange High School on either September 13th or October 16th at around 2:30, and the present, the event will be from 3 to 5 on both days. And I thank all the volunteers in the town for helping us get the word out with this. Like I said, it's getting out there slowly, but we're getting it out. There's also copies available in a PDF form in Spanish, we'll be presenting that Friday night at your meeting, so we're, little by little, we're going to work on the, the community organizations to assist us this month. So, the survey, folks, if you're, if you see it online, just go to the Township website and click right on it, it's on the front page, and we encourage you to take it, because some folks that I spoke with think it may not be for them, they may not need services, it's not about what you may need right now, but what you may need in the future. And when you take the survey and we get the data back and the report, it's going to enable the Township to use the report to go out and apply for more grants, so we could hopefully get some more programming here in the Township. Let's see, and last but not least, oh, I'm not sure if Council President, you want to speak of it, you could give some details I may miss, but our Friends, the West Orange Public Library, Second Annual Fall Book Sale is coming up, it is to the public Saturday, September 23rd, and Sunday, September 24th, Saturday from 10 to 4, and Sunday 10 to 3, and if you're a member of the Friends, there's a preview, special preview night, a wine and cheese reception from 6:00 PM to 7:30 on Friday, September 22nd. So all's welcome to come, come join the Friends, you could go on our website at www.wopl.org/friends. If I missed anything, Council President, please help me out.
You didn't give a list of the cheese.
The cheese.
Different cheeses.
Or wine. And thank you very much, that's all I have, it's.
Councilman?
Been a busy end of the summer.
Yes, thank you, Council President, I hope everyone had a wonderful Labor Day this past weekend, it wasn't long enough, but hopefully we all got to get a little rest. Council President, a couple of things, the Human Relations Committee held a little bit of a walk rally, that was really, really nice and touching a couple of weeks ago, so I just want to thank them for organizing that along with Essex Rising, we were all there actually, yes, in front of Town Hall, it was just about how we have to do what we can to make sure that, you know, hate doesn't continue to spread and we all get along as a community, to communicate and make sure that we attack and address issues that may develop into differences, one at a time, one person at a time, that was the message. It was, it was well received, we had a good crowd, so I just, again, I want to thank the organizers of that event. Secondly, you know, Mr. Rodriguez is here, our president of the Hispanic Foundation, he's going to talk about several events coming up, Hispanic Heritage Month is September 15th through October 15th, so we'll defer to him on that. And lastly, Council President, I want to make, make mention of one of our constituents, Ms. Carmel Porchesi, she's being honored at Heritage Festival in Hanover, and she's very excited, Carmel is 92 years old.
Amazing.
She's a parishioner, you see her at St. Joseph's Church, she's been living in West Orange since 1958, so I just want to congratulate her on that honor. It's an organization that comes together to spread, to spread love amongst the different ethnic groups, and she represents the, she's representing the Italian-American community at that event, so again, on behalf of the Council, I want to wish her the best and congratulate her on her honor. There's going to be a dinner, October 14th, 2017, at the Hanover Manor on Eagle Rock Avenue, so congratulations Carmel, and that's all, thank you very much.
And just to follow up on Councilman Cirillo, there was another rally, a unity rally yesterday morning here in town, in front of Town Hall, organized by Mr. Mike Taylor, who's a longtime resident, a lot of people know him, I was invited but was out of state, I, I trust it went well, I didn't read any horrible news coverage, so, anyway, thank you for that. That concludes our conference agenda, we can start our public meeting. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Start Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 28th, 2016, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 8th, 2016. Councilwoman Casalino?
Present.
Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Krakovia?
Present.
Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Council is now in their public meeting.
First on the agenda is the public comment, if you'd like to speak a public comment, please raise your hand, be recognized by the Chair, and come up to the lectern, and you'll have five minutes to, to speak. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Vice Mayor, please, come on up, you can start us off. Is there anyone else? I saw a hand in the back, please, come on down, you can be the next person, and, next person, please.
Good evening, everyone, good evening, Council. Rodolfo Rodriguez, 22 Ashford Terrace. First of all, I know you guys have on the agenda tonight the Municipal ID, that would be wonderful if that's approved tonight. Reason one, because we have an immigration forum this Friday at 7 o'clock, if anyone wants to come and assist and at least show, it would be nice from any of the Council. Mayor Paris will be there. That would be nice if that's approved tonight, citizens in town would be really happy about We will have raffles on that meeting, dinners on the, from a local restaurant, baskets and stuff like that for the community, that's all free, everything we do is free actually. On the 17th, we have the Art Council with the Latino, that's the Hispanic Heritage Month, we have the Latino arts presentations, so everyone is invited, that's down the valley. And the 25th, very important, if the Council could be here, would be wonderful, this is a historic event. I have the ambassador from the Dominican Republic coming, I have a congressman from Dominican Republic, I have an ambassador from, forgot the name of this other country, but we have a bunch of very important people coming for this event. And right after the event, we have a flamenco show at the library, this flamenco band was actually nominated for two Grammy Awards, the European, that's how good they are, so this is really a very, very nice event, and we would love to see all the Council, if you guys can. It's Monday at 6 o'clock, right here in front of Town Hall, and actually, we will be raising all the flags from all Latin American countries, all of them, so each community leader will be, we're expecting 300 to 400 people actually, and it's going to be a lot of people. So, would be very nice, again, if the Municipal ID is done today, because Friday would be a big, big thing for the community. On the immigration forum, last time we had it, we had way over 100 people, and we're expecting just about the same amount of people this Friday night at 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Rodriguez. Next is a young woman, who raised your hand, please, come on up.
That's you?
Yes, please, come on up, don't be shy. If you could just start out with your name and spell your, your name, and also give your address, and then you'll have five minutes, please, just try to speak into the microphone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Carolyn Chase. I have a stupid question to ask. The lady, the lady in the bench down there told me not to say stupid, because there's no question that it's stupid.
That's true.
And I believe her. Now, if I can't get an answer from one, somebody must know somebody who can give me an answer. I have two kids of them with me. I'm sick with a fractured hip and a bad ankle, which the ankle is for about 25 years, I have it. I didn't work much, I don't, I don't expect to be on welfare, but I would like to live in a nice, comfortable place. Where I'm living now, it is very expensive in West Orange. It's a very nice place to live, but it's costly. Now, I was passing on, I drive past Central, on Central Avenue and Valley Road, there's a nice building up there, I want to know if it's for the city or it's for private. I don't know who it belongs to, but I would really like to get a room there to rent.
Ms. Chase, the practice that we have here, very good question, not a stupid question at all, very good question, our practice here is that you ask all of your questions, and then after everyone has finished speaking a public comment, then the Council people and perhaps the Administration will respond. So if you have any other comment or any other questions besides that, please let us know, and then we will answer you at the end of public comment.
I really, really don't have, that's my, the most important thing I have to ask, who the building belongs to, whether it's for the city or it's a private sector. If it's for the city, I would like to know where could I get an application to, a time of help, so I can get a place to not live, a clean place. My rent is more than what I can really pay, so if anybody knows something, please give me a good answer.
Okay.
Do you want me to just respond?
Ms. Hayes, would you like to answer that now?
No, I'd like to, Central and, where on Central and Valley?
Central and Valley is where that 7-Eleven store is.
Right.
I don't know the.
It's Albert's property.
It's in West Orange.
Joe Albert's property, where all the buildings are going.
Oh, yeah, but they're all, they're all vacant buildings.
Can I respond?
There's nobody living in those buildings.
Right, it's new construction, it's a new development, they will be, there were applications available for affordable housing applications, we can, you didn't leave your address, but if you tell us your address, we can mail something out to you, they're rental properties, so when the time comes, they're not finished yet, but when the time comes, you can certainly look at one of the affordable housing applications.
Do you want to know where I live?
We need, if you want us to mail you an application.
It's not finished yet, but.
No, it's not finished.
Yeah, we need, we need your address so we can.
Oh, those are rentals.
Right, but we, they were in the paper, we could get her an application.
Nine Wheeler Street.
Nine Wheeler Street.
Once they're good, you have to apply.
Okay, we'll give it to the clerk.
Ms. Chase?
Yes, sir.
Would you just write your name and address and phone number on this?
Okay, sir.
And if somebody would get back to our matrix.
Thank you very much.
And if you want to just sit down and do that.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chase, I also want to add that if you put your age on there, you don't have to say your age publicly, but if you put your age on there too, we can look at one of the senior, I said, you don't have to say it publicly, but if you'd like to put your na, your age on there also.
Just a number.
Then, good for you. But we do have senior housing in, in town as well.
Good for you.
Last meeting, myself and some other Essex Rising members were here to talk about the Municipal ID ordinance, and the ordinance that you have today is the result of a meeting after the public comment with Chief Abbott and the Mayor, and I wanted to just thank both Chief Abbott and the Mayor, the Administration, and obviously the Council for addressing, you know, our, our large-scale concerns with the ordinance as it was written, and thank you for considering it again today, and just, we look forward to working further with the Administration on other fair and welcoming policies and serving some of the residents of the Township that may currently be underserved, so thank you again to everybody, and we're very happy with, with where the ordinance ended up.
Great.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Anyone else like to speak, please raise your hand.
Alan Grossman for North Culling Place, since you mentioned it, I did cover the community rally yesterday in front of the building here, there was about 150 people that were present, and it was really very well-attended and very well-done, there was members from the Christian and Muslim-Jewish communities there, so I just want to let you know, it did go well. They also announced that Saturday night at Ashback, they're going to be having sort of a unity event based on music from all different cultures, so people should know that as well. I just want to, is it, any update on the Phase Two of the redevelopment, I thought that one might be discussed tonight, I wouldn't, where that stands, if you can update us on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grossman. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, please raise your hand?
Anthony Paglisi, Public Information Officer for Essex County, representing County Executive De Fincenzo. Just want to share some, I mean, the fall is a very busy time, I just want to share some upcoming events that we're having. First of all, on Monday, September 11th at 8:00 AM at Eagle Rock Reservation, we have an annual ceremony there to remember the 9/11 events, we're going to have that again, rain or shine, Monday. Then on September 23rd, at the Environmental Center, is our annual Fall Family Festival. All of our partners there will have information booths, as well as other environmentally-oriented organizations will be featured there as well. There's lots of activities for kids, so we invite everyone to come out, that's between 11 and 4. And then on Tuesday, September 26th, is our Annual Senior Wellness Day at Cody Arena, that goes from 10 until 2, and really, that day, we transform the arena into a one-stop center for seniors, where they can get any kind of information about staying independent, as well as listen to some great music and have a breakfast and lunch on us. All those events, plus all the events that we have in October and November are on our website, which is essiccountynj.org, and I just want to bring mention to some October events, we have our Household Houses Waste Collection Day, our Computer Electronics Collection Day, and then for the first time, I know you, West Orange has held this event numerous times, but we're going to have our first shredding day on October 28th. So like I said, all those flyers and all that information is on the website, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. This afternoon at the senior town pool picnic for the senior citizens, they were already talking about the Senior Wellness Fair that you just mentioned on the 26th, can you talk about transportation also, that numbers to call, or if anyone needs any, needs transportation?
Oh, well, that's one number I don't have memorized. They can call the County Executive's Office, 973-621-4400. I'm blanking on the senior transportation number, but if they call us, we'll definitely point them in the right way, right direction.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Paglisi. Is there anyone else who would like to speak a public comment, please raise your hand? Seeing no more hands, I'm going to close this portion of public comment and open it up to my colleagues, if anyone would like to respond, please just let me know. I would like to just say to Ms. Chase, thank you. I would like to just say to Ms. Chase, thank you very much for coming up here. I still need to get your phone number.
Yes.
And that's okay, that's okay. But there are affordable housing opportunities, both that exist now in the town and also are being proposed for the future. We also have multiple senior subsidized housing, as you're perhaps aware, and that might be also something that you're interested in. But we will get you that information before you leave tonight. I definitely want to get your phone number, and we will get you the information. Well, it looks like Madam Clerk is taking care of that now. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Just an update too, is the follow-through with Rent a House, even though it's not a township issue, but as a board member of Rent a House and for the seniors in the township, the window installation, new window installation is moving along quite readily. It really is looking good. The windows are going to be a big savings for energy, and they're going to be a better environment with the windows for our seniors. Also, we're planning, I'm waiting for management, I'm waiting for the tenant association reps to get back to me on dates to have a tenant meeting with the management company, Dan Ritchie from Marzulli, and to get their feedback, and Marzulli will be able to give the tenants an update on the projects going on, of what will be done after the windows are done with the funds that are left over. You just have to remember, the money to put the windows in, the window cost is almost $900,000 for all those windows. The window cost came from the refinancing of the mortgage for Rent a House that we just completed about six months ago. And so whatever funds are left over and go forward in our capital expenditure, that'll be applied to other projects within the facility, painting, carpeting, other things, and remediation. So that'll be discussed at the meeting. So as soon as the tenant representatives get back to me, we'll have the meeting scheduled and let the tenants know when that'll be done, Council President. So I keep following up, so we are answering and addressing the tenants' needs at Rent a House. Thank you, Ms. Chase, and I'm sure as the Council President said, and Councilwoman McCartney said, they'll get back to you when there are applications. There's Rent a House, there's Degnan House, these are our senior facilities, and also other housing will be around. Mr. Pagliisi, thank you, and thank you to the county executive and Board of Freeholders for the events that go on, particularly for our residents and for our seniors and our youth, and of course, for environmental protection, for, you know, recycling, shredding, and the event up at the hospital center for, you know, tainted waste and paints and hazardous materials. It's just a magnificent operation. You just come in, they take, you don't even have to get out of your car. So it's like, they take everything out for you. So that's very good. Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez, thank you for updating us on the information. I hope a lot of residents come. You don't have to be Hispanic or Latino to enjoy it. You know, it just shows you the diversity of our community, and I hope everybody comes to show our support for all of our residents. It's a great thing. And also, and also you have a street fair coming up, Deputy Mayor, that you didn't mention, so I hope we'll have that on the website, and I'm looking forward to that and all the good food. So it should be a good thing. So thank you for your updates tonight. Matt Dragon, thank you for your comments and everything else. We always like to make sure we do what's best for our residents and make sure we always protect information. And Mr. Grossman, you know, thank you. The other funny thing about it is that I didn't learn about yesterday's event until 12:00 in the morning. So when I woke up, there was an email. So, I mean, I wish it would have went out sooner because more people could have been in, and any of the council members who were in town could have attended, so, you know, but thank you for bringing it to our attention. I saw Rabbi Tobin was there and a number of people, so it was really good. And thank you, Council President.
Just, yeah, thank you. Thank you to Rodolfo. There's so much going on over there. It's, you have to keep us posted on Father Hernandez also and his dissertation. Ms. Chase, we'll do what we can to get you information now that we have your number and contact information.
Thanks. I would like to attend the next meeting. So all I would like to get the information on in the letter. When is the next council?
The next council meeting would be...
I'm a citizen. I can sit, I can sit in here, and I vote every... A strong vote, sorry.
You're welcome to attend. Our next meeting is September 19th, same place?
November 19th.
Uh, September 19th, November.
September, your election day, so.
September.
I made that draw nice blue vote. A strong vote.
Ms. Chase, thank you very much. Just for decorum purposes, please don't speak, continue to speak to the council, okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilwoman?
Yep. Just a thank you to Matt, no, thank you to Matt. I appreciate that you reach out from the community and with the administration to iron out everything that was presented to us. I think there are still a few more questions that we have that will be discussed when we introduce the ordinance. Thank you for your participation. And for Mr. Grossman, we authorized the issuance of the non-recorresponds at our last meeting. I have not, there's nothing on our agenda this evening. I haven't heard of anything as far as Phase Two. Nothing so far has been presented to us. And I wanted to follow up on the transportation services for Essex County, Senior Wellness Transportation. The telephone number is 973-618-1280. Thank you.
Anyone else like to respond?
Yeah.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council President. Karen, I've been, since you came up here, I've been looking through my old editions of the West Orange Chronicle. The application for that property was actually in the Chronicle a couple of weeks ago. So I'm going to see if I can locate that for you, okay?
Okay.
All right? So it was in the paper, like, I want to say like three editions ago, but I'll try to find it. You're welcome. Now, Matt, thank you for your advocacy, not only you, but Essex Rising and Councilwoman Casselina, we had a lengthy conversation Sunday or Saturday, and thank you for all your due diligence on this issue of municipal IDs and trying to figure out the best way possible to represent the different constituents that would be covered, senior citizens, folks without a license, and folks that may not have any documents that are valid. I also want to mention that October 1st, it's confirmed, the street fair, there's a street fair on October 1st. Rodolfo Rodriguez didn't mention it during his report. It'll be on Washington Street, October 1st?
Watch on.
Watch on, I'm sorry. Watch on Avenue off Washington Street on October 1st. So more information, we'll disseminate more information at future meetings. Chief, he's worked really hard on this municipal ID issue as well, and all my colleagues, so hopefully tonight we can find some sort of resolution to the policy initiative. So, Council President, thank you very much for the time.
Councilwoman?
Sure. I guess, let's see, again, we haven't mentioned the update on Phase Two. I don't know if Mr. Sayers is going to handle that or if you'll update that. I'm just going down the list of all the questions that were asked.
The only update I have is that at the next meeting, we'll be having some more documents that will be put before the council, and we're going before the local finance board next week.
And just to follow up on that, if anybody is interested in looking at all of the documents, I guess it's about eight or nine pieces of legislation that'll be on the next council meeting. You can go to the town website, westorange.org, and just, I guess, search by Phase. If you put in Phase or Phase Two, meaning two Roman numerals, you'll get one link with all of the pending legislation, including the redevelopment agreement that's going to govern all of this. That's also going to be on the agenda.
And Ms. Chase, thank you for coming down, and it was a great question, because it makes me ask another question. It was just mentioned, it was in the Chronicle, the advertisement. Do we also post these on the website? I'll have to go look as far as these...
It's not for us. The person who owns the building...
They have to, it's their responsibility. Okay, so we wouldn't...
That's the difference. That's why we can't post it.
And Deputy Mayor, thank you for all you do and all the great work. As I mentioned earlier, we have the senior survey in the Spanish PDF for you, so we could reach members of your organization. And, you know, I'm glad you mentioned, you know, the municipal ID, Mr. Dragon, and we're going to have a lengthy conversation in a little bit. I appreciate all your advocacy and coming down and debating it. I'm supportive of offering our residents something, but I've also been looking at what the other towns and cities have been offering, and, but we'll get into that discussion in a little bit. But did a lot of research myself on it over the weekend, and hopefully we could come to some kind of resolution to accommodate all parties. And that's about it.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President. Everybody seemed to cover everything.
Did anyone from the administration want to say anything else in response to public comment?
No.
Okay. We're ready for the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Sure. Approval of minutes previous meeting, public meeting August 15th, 2017?
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
I had some questions, but Mr. Laporte answered them today for me. Did you speak to him today?
To Mr. Laporte, I got an email from him, but please, go ahead. Councilwoman?
No, I had a concern with the change orders, and he informed me on the two change orders we have with the street paving, that these were initiated by the administration or by him on his end, and that this isn't work that has been done already. It's for us to approve tonight before it gets done. So he heard us, especially, you know, you had made the comment in the past to make sure he comes to us before he moves forward, but these were initiated by him, not the contractor, and that's what he's doing. He's coming here to get our approval so he can move forward with these two change orders.
Well, perhaps while we're on that subject, what we're speaking about is Agenda Item K, Resolution 202-17, which is the fourth change order for a big road construction project that we've been doing, started in 2016. This would be the fourth change order, which would represent a 14.25% increase in the original contract amount of about $3 million, a little bit more than $3 million. And what Councilwoman and I were just asking questions about, we were trying to sort of clarify what was the source of the, of this fourth change order, and as Councilwoman pointed out, it was, it was good that, in my opinion, that Mr. Laporte was coming to the council to get approval of this before he actually did the expenditure of the money and then sort of comes retroactively to ask for the approval. But essentially, there is a, there is a situation on Ralph Road where we have to rebuild the foundation of the curbs, and that's causing an increase of about, I guess, what is it? $353,000? Mr. Gross, you know this better than I do.
That's correct.
And then there's another four streets where I guess it's a bit of a cost overrun of about, I'm sorry, can you help me out, of about $89,000?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's what we were referring to. And I didn't mean to step on you, Councilwoman, but did you have any...
No, 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 that's all I wanted to add in.
I think, I think it's really key here, this is, you know, some change orders are because when you get into the field, you have conditions that the decisions have to be made immediately, and the township engineer does that and then comes back, and those are real quote-unquote change orders. In this particular situation, we're actually within the scope of the original bid, but there's more money left over in terms of our allocations, and the line item costs within these contracts are advantageous for us. So it allows us to do different, or similar work, excuse me, similar work in addition to what we originally contemplated. So this is a way to get things done faster, at a good price, without recreating the wheel. So I think that Mr. Laporte did a great job of doing the analysis on this and putting this forward quickly to the council.
And I appreciate he came to us before the money was spent, because that...
Well, again, and I think it's important to note that there are times when that's just not possible. You know, if it's, if it's not economic to wait, you know, you've got, you've got the grounds open, you've got to make a decision. They have to make a decision. But in this particular situation, that wasn't the situation, so certainly could bring it before the council.
Okay, I'm good.
And of course, my, the counterargument to that is that there is, there's usually some time between the time you find the problem, that you're estimating the cost, and you're actually starting to do that work, that he could be letting the council know. We could decide whether we wanted a special meeting to just address that or whatever. So that's sort of my part of the argument. Councilwoman, did you have any, any other questions or anything you want to pull?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Does anybody else have, Councilwoman?
Thank you. Lenny is supposed to come. I spoke to him also about two resolutions. It seemed that the township was looking to acquire the property at 665 Eagle Rock Avenue, and I wasn't sure what that property actually was, and I knew open space, hadn't discussed anything. This is very interesting, because the corner of Eagle Rock Avenue and Pleasant Valley Way really is already a livable community. Unfortunately, we did not get that grant for that corner, but the good news for that corner is that the, this was from the New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority. We submitted the application back in November. We were not awarded that grant, but they sent the review, requested and secured the reviews of why and the reasons why they, we were rejected. So when that comes around, hopefully next year, we can work on that. And I found out that this 665 Eagle Rock Avenue is vacant property.
It's a gas station.
Yeah, a gas station up there, right? I didn't realize that. And after speaking to Lenny, it just sounds like that would be a great idea for a municipal lot.
The reason we, it's actually the mayor's idea, is because the bank is now going to be on the corner, which is going to take away those parking spaces for the commuters.
Right.
And so we looked at the gas station across the street, and we, if we can work that out, that's where we'd like to do that. I think we're going to get about 20 to 24 commuter spaces there.
I think it was a great idea. I was, my question was really, why is the township doing an assessment on remediation? But then I realized that we need to do that for the property.
It's more, just to be clear about that, it's actually, so to be sure, that our intention would be to develop it as a parking lot indefinitely, you know, for the foreseeable future. So the question is, will we, depending on the current condition or the current situation within the remediation that's ongoing there, whether or not we would be allowed to be able to use the property on moving forward for that purpose without disturbance, depending on what remediation is required in the future by the current responsible party. Township would not be responsible for any remediation. We just want to make sure that if we require the property, whatever remediation is going to go on, we'll be able to continue to utilize the property.
Got it.
And Lenny did say he was going to be here, but I do know that he's riding the Pleasant Valley, didn't he?
Yes, yes.
To work out any kinks that might happen. Today was the first day.
So both of those resolutions are along that line, just to, if we do make a recommendation to move forward with the acquisition of the property, we want to make sure that we'll be able to use the property as we're anticipating.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any...
Just ask Mr. Sayers a quick question.
Please, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Just curious, were they renovating the old church into a chase bank? Is that what they're doing?
No.
No.
They're not going to renovate it, they're going to knock it down.
I believe they're taking it down and they're rebuilding a new building there.
Really?
Yeah.
And as a consequence...
Chase, Manhattan.
It's going to be up to the corner, it's going to be on the corner, basically.
So as a consequence, it's going to knock out a lot of the parking that we have been using for municipal purposes.
Plus the parking we have now is not dedicated to us, then of course this would be, so this would be, in that sense, improved, so.
Okay.
Council President just reminded me that... Council President just reminded me that last year, I went to Avon by the Sea to look at a church there for the stained glass windows to secure for St. Mark's. And there might be something that we could look out here for St. Mark's at this church before they...
Very good idea. Take the windows...
Before they do anything.
So we were discussing the acquisition of this property. I would like to pull Agenda Item I, Resolution 200-17, which is related to it, and also Agenda Item J, Resolution 201-17, which is another item related to this. And also wanted to pull Agenda Item G, which is Resolution 198-17. And I think, is that it for everybody?
Yeah.
So Council President, I have four resolutions, K, I, J, and G. Well, they're not in that order, but...
I don't think anybody is pulling K.
No, there was a question on K.
No, was there a question?
G, I, and J.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. K, I have my questions answered.
Okay. No problem.
Council President.
Could I just ask you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, just on Resolution G that you just pulled, just to explain that this is a resolution also to retain matrix for preliminary assessment on remediation, which is required with funds that we were awarded from Green Acres. So not only do you need the two appraisals, you also need an assessment that the funds are really going toward the playground upgrades. And that particular resolution is required for the Green Acre funding that went to Degman and Lafayette Playground.
Okay.
Thank you. On Agenda Item L, which is Resolution 203-17, there is a request for authorization of a restricted parking space on Cobain. And I had some back and forth with Mr. Laporte about this, because what we're going to be doing is providing a parking space overnight on a street that does not allow parking overnight. And it's to accommodate, I'm not sure, somebody in need.
They're both handicapped. The one, the husband has problems walking and has handicap, and the daughter is wheelchair-bound. And so the daughter's home by now, I think, within a period, and looking to, you know, eventually relocate. But right now, the car needs to be where, you know, special parking.
Yes.
I mean, it's right around the corner from us, Council President, so it's...
Yes. So it's a temporary, we're not doing it through ordinance, we're doing it through resolution. But I was raising the issue with him, because that's such a heavily traveled street, I wondered if there could be some accommodation in case there's snow. Because a car that's parked over there overnight could get plowed in and could also increase the hazardous situation in event of a heavy snow. And Mr. Laporte said that he would certainly put that in, that the car would have to be moved in the event of snow. But it's not in the resolution as it stands now. And I just wanted to ask Mr. Kaser how we might go about addressing that. Because I think it is important, it's right next to Roosevelt School, and there's a lot of traffic there, a lot of buses.
I'm sorry, Council President, no.
Sure, go ahead.
It's two houses in from the corner, so.
Oh.
Obviously, you can move to make an amendment to the resolution and adopt it as amended. I thought, I mean, I saw Mr. Laporte's response to at least, I think, that question that you had raised, and I thought he indicated that this was a temporary, like, three-month thing.
Yes.
And that it was going to end December 1st or end of November, so that it wouldn't be really in effect unless it was extended during snow season, what normally would be the snow season. Obviously, we sometimes get snow in October, November, so I can't say that's not going to happen. But you could, I don't know what problems it creates for the person who's getting the benefit of this, I don't know, but...
And additionally, if there were to be such an emergency, an emergency circumstance, you know, these types of things can be overruled by the emergency management coordinator or the mayor in a given circumstance, and they could be ordered to remove it even if it's not in the resolution. So it's six or one half done thing.
Well, obviously, the simpler would be the better answer. If both would have the same effect, we don't have to amend it. But I just was a little concerned about a car being snowed in on that street so close to a school. So if you're saying, Mr. Gross, that in the event that there, that could be a problem, then that's something that can be taken care of administratively.
That could be an issue. I mean, you know, in an emergency circumstance, if a decision is made that in the best interest of the public, that a particular street has to be cleared, then that can be ordered by, again, the mayor and the emergency management coordinator. So yes, the answer is.
Okay.
Well, by the same token, I mean, when you have a street where there's no parking at night, you can call a police department and, you know, get exception to that administratively for a temporary period of time. So same kind of principle.
Yep.
I have to add.
Councilwoman.
This is really a beautiful story, because I think it probably will be temporary, because the ramp was required when the daughter had to attend Roosevelt Middle School, and she has just graduated Harvard Law School. So she's home. So her determination, I think it will be temporary until she finds a job. And I just think it's a beautiful story.
Cool. Any other changes on the consent agenda?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
The first item is Resolution 198-17, it's Agenda Item G. It's a resolution authorizing the township to retain an engineering firm known as Matrix to prepare preliminary assessment report for the township's multi-park development project as required by the Green Acres Funding Program, and I think Councilwoman may have mentioned a little bit earlier. I pulled this only because I'm opposed to bidding out work, even professional work, without getting competitive proposals or competitive bidding. And in this case, Mr. Laporte said that he felt that it was the right way to go, to not get more than one bid. They thought it was a good price, and that he was under some time constraint to respond. But I just figured if he's got enough time to get one proposal, he could also get a couple more and just check to be sure. So I wasn't looking to argue anything, I just didn't want to vote for this.
Yeah, just to put it, and I appreciate that, but just also put it in perspective. Each one of the contracts is for $3,500 each. We're, by our own ordinances and, as well as...
Your under.
State law, you know, we try to balance the efficiency of day-to-day work with the potential savings. And for instance, we can spend up to $6,000 without a quote, even, by law. That doesn't mean we should or we shouldn't, oftentimes, we do it, depending if we, especially if we think there's a potential to save taxpayer money. But if, in the opinion of Mr. Laporte, this is a pretty much constant number, he feels very confident, is that there's really, in terms of utilization of time, sometimes it just makes sense to take what you have. So that's kind of where we are with this. Certainly appreciate and understand, you're, no one's more of advocate of competitive purchasing than I am. And so, but again, sometimes you, we had a conversation today over two cents, and we realized, a two-cent difference. And we realized that, you know, we averaged about one cent, or was it $1 per minute for each person that was having the conversation. So, you know, in essence, even though it was something that we thought ought to be, at least make a decision about, we realized that we actually lost money in even dealing with it. So sometimes you just have to make those valuations. In this case, Mr. Laporte didn't.
Anybody else?
No, we've used this vendor before, so I assume you're happy with their service as well. That probably helped. I would assume Mr. Laporte's had that answered consideration.
Numerous times.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 198-17?
So moved.
Resolution authorizing the township to retain Matrix to prepare a preliminary assessment report for the township's multi-park development project as required by the Green Acres Funding Program awarded by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. First?
So moved.
The motion is carried.
No, you have to, let's do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're just testing us, Madam Clerk, we know.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krkovic?
No, but the resolution passes.
All right.
The next item, I think we should just sort of take in, take both of them at the same time, because the issues that I have with it are basically the same thing. For me, there's a couple of issues. First, there were actually three related issues, including a purchase agreement that the administration initially was going to ask for the council's review and approval. But that's been pulled. So we don't have that piece of legislation on the agenda. And yet, we do have two other items to spend a little over $10,000 to get some professional assistance on the acquisition, even though we haven't actually decided, the council has not been asked to review and approve the actual acquisition. So I'm a little concerned about agreeing to spend money when we don't have the actual property in the same legislative stream. In addition, as I think you heard, it's a former gas station. It's a property, I think, that's been pretty much empty since before I moved here, which has been 13, 14 years.
Yeah, it's a long time ago.
It's, so there is some contamination. I asked the administration for some additional detail on the contamination, seeing as how it did not appear in the time that I've lived here, that there's been any work over there to clean it up. So I don't know whether that means it's a little bit of contamination or a lot of contamination. In addition, the property there is assessed on the town's rolls at about $103,000 and change. And the original, the acquisition price was $400,000. So I was concerned that all of those factors sort of played in the same ballpark. So I just wanted to get from the administration, you know, as much as I can, what the contamination is and why we're proposing to spend $400,000 on property that's assessed at $100,000, and why the administration wants to go ahead with these sort of ancillary agreements.
There's three issues. Number one, it's actually being treated for groundwater contamination, I believe. The DEP is up there every couple of months doing groundwater contamination testing and things like that. So when we had found out what type of testing was being done, we had all agreed that we need someone to go in there and take a look at the property before we enter, we're not going to enter into a contract if, in fact, there's all kinds of things that we're going to have to go through to make it into a parking lot. So we had decided that we need someone from our perspective to go in and take a look at it and say, hey, if we want to use this as a parking lot, can we use this as a parking lot? Over and above what DEP's already doing, whether it's with the groundwater contamination. We think you can do that, but we need some expert advice and opinion on whether we can do that or not. So that's why we went, why we want to spend that money upfront, to make sure that we're able to do what we want to do before we purchase the property. That's the issue.
And as far as the issue of the assessment versus the acquisition price, you have to keep in mind that properties are often assessed based on the value minus whatever circumstances around that property, maybe contamination. And while I haven't had the specific conversation with the assessor on this particular parcel, it would not surprise me if this particular assessment was based on some estimate or some of the idea that there was contamination. Subsequently, we believe, and it's been represented to us, and this part of this process is to confirm all that, there has been a determination of who the responsible party is. And once that occurs, that responsible party is required to do a cleanup. So in that situation, often, the value of the land is no longer diminished by the cost of the cleanup, because there's this responsible party to do that. In this case, the responsible party certainly has, our belief is the responsible party has the assets to do and will do that. So hopefully, we're not going to be, hopefully, our concept here is to find out through these studies to ensure that we're not going to be at any risk, number one, of having to be responsible for any of the cleanup. And number two, as I said before, that we'll be able to use it. In terms of looking at the numbers and what it costs to actually develop surface parking, the cost of the acquisition and development of this is within the norms of what it would cost you to do that, if you decided to do that on a clean piece of property. So we're, you know, we're looking at that. And that's what all this is. We're asking for permission to do these investigations, so that we can come back to you and say, okay, we've completed it, here where it is, we're either going to recommend moving forward or we're recommending not moving forward. And that's why we pulled the resolution for the approval for the purchase, because we want to make sure that all this is done first.
So are the tanks moved out? They are, that's all been gone, right?
That's all gone. This is about what's left over, if any, you know, to what extent there's contamination, and what's the solution for that? So for instance, if the solution is, oh, yeah, well, over the next five years, they're going to take out all that dirt, well, now that probably doesn't work for us.
Is there...
But if the solution is, as it is in many places, for the next 20 years, there has to be monitoring done with monitoring wells, and those wells we located, and you could certainly have that within a parking lot without disrupting the use of it as a parking lot. Parking lot is a very low-intensity use. So it, you know, it happens a lot.
No, I think it's great, because that corner, those corner stores there, I know there's a beauty shop there as well. You know, this way, nobody has to cross over the street, and if they're getting to the restaurant on the other side, it's good for them at night, too, they don't have to cross over once, but...
And that's the other thing we've done, a cursory look at, but look at elsewhere, you know, what other alternatives are there? And what are the costs of those alternatives? That may vary well. If it includes tearing down another structure to put parking there ultimately, and we're going to lose all the parking, this may be the most inexpensive way to move forward. And we believe that's probably the case.
Is there a consideration to charge for permit parking there, or...
We have not discussed that.
Or meter parking?
But, you know, just like any other parking lot, once you see the utilization, and depending on what the utilization is, that's a decision you can look at. We look at any of our lots, you could make the case to charge or not charge based on the utilization.
And I was, I should have identified this property when we first started talking about it. It's on the, in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Eagle Rock Avenue and Pleasant Valley Way. It's about, I would guess, 50 or 60 meters west of the intersection, past a little, I guess, not really a strip mall, but a set of buildings with some retail in it. It's about the only unimproved area.
Right, that's right. That's right. So I mean, it really, it may be the only game in town.
CBL Fine Arts there.
To be honest with you. And that's another reason that we want to look at it seriously. And I'm still, you know, not on metrics, so I think it's 1,200 feet.
Okay. So if the $103,000 assessment is not accurate because of this, how did you come up with a $400,000 price tag for the acquisition?
We did not. The owners of the property had, we had discussed prices with the owners of the property, and they're looking to sell it for $400,000. Or lease it, I think you said, for what, $15,000 a year, which we felt, if we were going to take it for five, 10 years, it's not worth it.
That was the best price that could be negotiated.
Right.
It was not, you know, we...
It was higher than that when we started.
It was much higher, they were looking for a lot more. And...
That was the best.
I'm sure they were.
No, they were, they were...
But it's been sitting there empty. Does anybody have an estimate of how long it's been sitting there empty?
Maybe it's 20 years.
Yeah, but he hasn't owned it for that long, this guy.
And whatever it is, it is. I mean, the bottom line is, if it's an appropriate use for a parking lot, those metrics are pretty easy to calculate. You know, and, you know, you basically, you know, what is your dirt cost? What is your cost of improvement? And does that, you know, how does that, you know, how does that mesh with, if, like I said, if you went and bought, you're able to buy another clean piece of property somewhere at market and improve it, how does it compare? So we think we'll be able to show you, if everything goes well, as we anticipate, we'll be able to show you that this is going to be economical in terms of providing surface parking.
Because we would not be responsible for the remediation.
We are not going to be responsible for the remediation. That will not, that will not, I dare say that would not be a recommendation that we would come up with.
Definitely not.
Any rough estimates of how much it would cost to turn it, if we did buy it for $400,000, how much it would cost to turn it into a parking lot?
We'll be prepared to, we've got some back of the napkins, I really don't want to publicly talk about a number that's done that loosely. But again, before we come back and ask you about to approve the purchase of the property, we'll... we'll, we'll have, you know, a nice, a very good, solid cost estimate of everything, uh, not just, not just a ballpark. Uh, but, but I can tell you that the ballpark is well within norms. Not, it's not, not the top end, it's not the bottom end, it's, it's right in the middle.
Thank you, thank you, Council President. I would like the administration to seriously think and consider, you know, having it as metered parking. I mean, just to generate revenue. I mean, we have a lot of parking lots, and we don't use a lot of our parking that had meters, and we're missing opportunities like other townships do to generate some income. So, I'd like you to seriously consider, you know, that being metered parking and, you know, making it, you know, reliable meter parking, you know, the new ones they're using with the debit cards and, and things like that. Because, you know, you, you look at other towns, when I do some evaluations, they, they make some good revenue from their parking.
I think that, I think that will certainly be part of the metric. I think what was mentioned before was permitting.
Your permit?
We're not, we're not, not anticipating permitting at the moment.
No, no, I don't, no. That, that locks the, you know, the thing in so, okay. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Gross.
So, what you're saying makes a whole lot more sense to me than when I first looked at it and actually saw the purchase agreement on there. Is that, it looked like you were planning to ask us for...
No, no, it went on by mistake, to be honest with you. In other words, everything was prepared, and so, it was then transmitted to the clerk's office, and there was an instruction to put it on. And then, when I saw it was on, I realized that it shouldn't have been, so we, we took it off. It's not, it wasn't like, "Oh, maybe we shouldn't do that." It just, it was, since everything was prepared, we try to get it, we're trying to get everything prepared upfront and just, and stage it, you know, appropriately. So, that's the only reason that it was pulled.
So, basically, what you're saying is, we got to spend maybe $10,000 to figure out whether we want to spend a lot more?
Yes.
And if that turns out to be bad?
You absolutely would not recommend you spend, to, to purchase property without spending this $10,000 first. Absolutely not.
We have to do due diligence.
And, and I would very much like to see, you know, the DEP reports that were referenced in, I guess, the, the legislation, or in the legislation here, uh, before we actually vote on it, because I, I got some concern about that issue.
Yeah, the real key, it has to be locked up that we're not going to be responsible. I mean, that's, at, at the end of the day, the two, two things we care about, we're not responsible, number one, and number two, we can use it as we anticipate without disturbance.
Right.
Or substantial disturbance.
Okay. Anything else? Madam Clerk, do you want to, let's just take them one at a time, please.
Sure. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 200-17, Resolution authorizing the township to retain Matrix to perform the preliminary assessment and Phase One environmental assessment for the property at 665 Eagle Rock Avenue, which the township is in the process of purchasing to be converted to the public parking for shoppers and commuters. Pursuant to Matrix, proposal, the retention shall be for a total of, uh, cost of $7,100. Uh, this resolution was pulled by Joe Krkovic. First?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krkovic.
Uh, yeah, and before I, I vote, I just want to make clear, because I didn't bring this up earlier, I'm going to vote against this only because the, there weren't multiple, uh, proposals solicited. But I, I do agree, it makes sense to spend the money. So, I vote no.
Motion is carried.
Yes. Thank you. Next resolution?
Alright. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 200, I mean, 201-17, Resolution authorizing the township to retain McManum, Scotland as special environmental council to assist with the purchase of property at 665 Eagle Rock Avenue and the remediation efforts currently occurring on the property. Pursuant to the agreement, McManum, Scotland's retention shall be for a total of $3,000. Again, this, uh, resolution was pulled by Joe Krkovic. Is there a first?
So moved.
First. Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krkovic.
Yes. Again, no for the same reason I cited before, so let's, no. So, the resolution passes.
Council President?
Yes, please.
I'm going to suggest, because I believe there's going to be extended discussion about the ordinance on second and final reading, that perhaps you may want to do the ordinances on first reading first and get them out of the way, and then, that'll be the only thing left.
You've read my mind. Thank you for suggesting. Is everybody in agreement on that?
Mm-hmm.
So, Madam Clerk, we're just going to, uh, do the ordinances on first reading first.
Okay.
Do it in my place.
Is there a motion to introduce Ordinance 2522-17, an Ordinance amending Chapter Two, Section 14.2 of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange? First?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, on first reading.
Council President Krkovic?
Yes. Any discussion? As long as we have the police chief here, maybe...
Yeah, maybe the chief could...
The ord, yeah, the ordinance has increased the number of captains, uh, in the organization from four to five, so...
Does that do with your organizational chart?
Yes. Taking the captains from four to five brings us back more in line with where we were years ago. In fact, we're eight captains when I was first appointed in 1980 or thereabout, in the eighties. Um, it, it's going to allow me to kind of, uh, take apart the operations of Control Division and compartmentalize it into a Special Response Team. Lieutenant Will Varonelli would be the fifth captain to be appointed, and most of you kind of got to know him on a first-name basis because he's my, uh, my go-to guy when we have problems in the neighborhood. So, I'm going to kind of take him and make him his own unit, rather than have him come on there a captain of investigations, because it, it's just, um, it's more difficult to explain than it is to, to do from my end, but, um, there, there's just sometimes too much internal conflict with having the traditional detectives who follow up on crimes and the quality of life issues, um, who's available, who's not available, who's on a surveillance, not on a surveillance. So, I just believe that this is going to allow me to individualize these functions differently. And, uh, and there's a, you know, I'm going to bore you with a lot of the details, but there's going to be a lot more responsibility along with that position.
And so, if you create the captain's position, everybody else moves up?
There would be a vacuum effect. There would be another lieutenant and another sergeant, but not an additional lieutenant or sergeant, just in line with the vacancies that would be created by that extension.
So, it's, it's roughly about a $10,000 annual budget increase?
Uh, I have to look at the contract and see for captain. It's, uh, I think the, run around 13% between the ranks, so, and that would only be half. And, uh, it takes a full year to go to top pay, and then another full year to, you know, to have that in your salaries. So, and since this year's almost over, it would, it would really be only half of that 13% for the majority of next year.
Okay.
For 12 months.
Any other questions?
Just a revision on the ordinance itself, because it looks like we're increasing the captains to 45 instead of 4-5. It says 45.
Oh, that's sneaky. I didn't catch that.
Mine says 425. I don't know which one.
Um, the actual ordinance itself?
It's a typo.
It's just a typographical error.
Are you sure? He said there were eight when he came in here.
No, we're at the 45.
I'm just kidding. Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll be sure to get that fixed before the...
Yes, let's.
Second. Anything else? Madam Clerk, the next, uh, ordinance on first reading, please.
Is there a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 2523-17, an Ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection 7-7.3, Temporary Parking Prohibition for Snow Plowing and Removal Subsection 7-12, Parking Prohibited for Street Cleaning and Maintenance, Subsection 7-14.1, Night Parking Restricted, and Subsection 7-14.7, Alternate Side Parking of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, on first reading. First?
So moved.
Second.
So...
Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krkovic?
Yes. Ordinance passes on first reading. Next ordinance on first reading, please.
Is there a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 2524-17, an Ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Seven, Traffic Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Handicapped Space, 72 Park Terrace, on first reading. First?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Krkovic?
Yes. Ordinance passes on first reading. Uh, now, we're back to ordinances on second and final reading, as per Mr. Kizer. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to, um, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit lost here.
It's, uh, Agenda Eight?
Yeah. Is there a motion to introduce Ordinance Number 2521-17 on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Council President, by May.
Yes, Mr. Kizer.
There are a multitude of problems with respect to this ordinance, um, one of which, and a very significant one, which I didn't realize until we were in, in this meeting, and I read the version of the ordinance that is on the agenda and is on the website.
You know, we, at the last meeting, we introduced on first reading an ordinance with certain
language. And I spoke on it at some length, in some frustration, I suppose, uh, and talked about, we shouldn't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Um, and there was discussion about changes and so forth, but there were no changes made that night. Um, I had been, I had extensive discussion with the clerk, and there was an exchange of emails last week. Um, and I thought that both versions of that ordinance were going to be on this agenda, the one that was approved on first reading and the revised version. My intent was to maximize your choices. Um, the concern I have now is that you may not be able to do anything with this ordinance, other than hopefully talk about it and come to agreement as to what language a majority of you would accept, because the ordinance that's on for second reading is different than the ordinance that was introduced on first reading.
Very much so.
Can't, can't do that. Um, you could, as a council, make changes, amendments to an ordinance on first reading before adopting on second reading, if those changes are not material. We've had this come up any number of times. Uh, it's hard for me to argue that the changes to this ordinance are not material. Um, first of all, if they're not material, why were they made? We're not talking about, we're talking about a lot of changes, and, and they're not minor changes. Um, so, I think you could not adopt this ordinance tonight under any circumstances without putting yourself at risk that, that ordinance would be challenged at some point in litigation based on the procedures followed to enact it. No, the, maybe the administrator maybe missed something. The ordinance that is on the website and on for second reading is different than the ordinance that was introduced on first reading. That's a problem. Okay? Um, I know from talking with some, one council member at least, uh, that there are differences of opinion about the language that should be in this ordinance. Um, and what I suggest is that you have it out tonight, as long as it takes, to come up with language that you would be acceptable, acceptable to at least a majority of you, so that it can go on the next meeting's agenda on first reading and adopt it at two weeks following that, the meeting two weeks following that. Um, I really don't see a viable alternative to that. Um, I leave it to you guys to hash it out.
Okay, so, if I could, just, this is procedural. We were actually in the midst of a, a motion to consider, uh, to introduce on second and final reading.
Right.
So, we haven't completed that process. Uh, but given what Mr. Kizer's legal advice is, it sounds like perhaps we, uh, either vote it down or, uh, have it fail for lack of a second.
And just so everybody knows, what I, the reason I had wanted both versions on the agenda, one, the one introduced on first reading, on for second reading, and the other one on for introduction on first reading is because then you would have the possibility of picking one or the other. Um, but you don't have that now. So, and my feeling was, if you're going to take the new one, you want, you would want to vote down the old one. Uh, that's just a clean way to do it, and then adopt the new one on second reading at the next meeting. But because the ordinance that's been advertised and is on for second reading is different than what was introduced, you can't do that. So, but you're right. I, I don't disagree with you that the way to do this is to vote this down, and you may want to hear from the public first.
So, perhaps what we do is we vote down the legislation with the understanding that we need to do more work, and then we can have a discussion about the language and however else.
So, so technically, this ordinance needs to come on first reading, and it's on second reading, because...
Because it's so much...
I have to tell you, I was a little taken back that we passed something on first reading and got a totally, you know, revised, new ordinance. Like, what, what did we do last time? I mean, was our votes just looked over? I, I mean, I was all taken, I was all taken back.
As Mr. Kizer said, the idea was to leave the first ordinance the way it was on second reading and introduce that on first reading tonight. However, for some reason, that didn't happen with regard to advertising, so legally, you can't, legally, you can't approve that on second reading because it's, 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 it has material changes in it.
Yes.
So, so, what, what the administration's position would be is that what you have tonight will be introduced on first reading at the next meeting. That's our position.
Unless, as part of our discussion, we want to suggest changes.
Yes.
But that's our position.
Why can't it be introduced as first reading tonight?
Wasn't advertised.
Not advertised. So, something has to be advertised as first reading.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, it was advertised on second reading. It wasn't advertised on first reading.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. Just going back over my notes, and I know Michelle has done so much more on this, I didn't think we were so far off from introducing this on first reading. I really didn't think that there were that many changes or material changes that needed to be made. Now, couldn't we just vote this down and introduce what we were supposed to have been introduced on second reading based on the first ordinance?
I don't think you can introduce it tonight because it's not, it hasn't been advertised.
No, I'm just saying delete, right. I'm just saying vote this down, that we are not introducing this on second reading because it is so materially different. And I didn't think we were that far off in the discussion that we had during our public comment last meeting.
I think at this point, you introduced it as a council. It's your ordinance. I, I don't think we can just withdraw it, okay? I don't think the administration can withdraw it. So, I think you need to vote it down, but I suggest that since there are members of the public, if they're still here, I don't know, but who expressed an interest in this and may have some interest in the language, you might hear from them, because you want to resolve the language issues if you can.
Sure.
Yes, this is also one of those sort of sticky things where we get a lot of ordinances from the administration that we very seldom look at and think it needs to be changed. And yet, we, we got these changes, I guess, without us, anybody being directly consulted from the council, and...
Yeah, we were, we were blind sighted, which I felt we were.
But when we did introduce it on first reading, we were all in favor of moving this forward.
Oh, okay. Let, let me just try to cut to the chase. As Mr. Kizer said a couple of times, we need to deal with the ordinance that's, that's on for second reading, and we need to either vote it up or vote it down. And we were in the midst of, uh, the motion. I don't think, did we get to a first or a second? Madam Clerk?
Yes, we did. First and... Yes, we did, first and second, we just didn't take a roll call yet.
Okay. So if we follow Mr. Kizer's advice, and I strongly urge us to, we should vote this down tonight, and then we can still have a discussion.
On the language.
About the proposed changes.
So the ordinance we did vote for.
On first reading.
But it's not this.
No, no, I know it's not that, this has been altered. So the one we did vote on, where does that go? Where does that stand?
That's what we're going to be voting against tonight.
You're voting against, not passing any ordinance tonight.
So although this has the same ordinance number, it's a different ordinance.
Yes, but you have to vote no, basically.
Obviously, but I'm saying, well, what we voted for last time, that goes away because this replaced it when it technically shouldn't have replaced it.
There was an effort to change the language in what you voted for last time. Somebody wants that language changed. You've got to direct us as to what language you want, what language is acceptable to at least a majority of.
Okay.
So that we can then draft that, and the chief is here, he's been involved in the process, we can at least get, I mean, it may be the one that is, that was put on the website with those changes, I don't know, but I know you have issues with the language.
Same.
We'll have to wait till.
Well, I approved the one last time, last, yeah, I was fine with that lang, with that language. Okay, so.
But we can't do it legally because it wasn't properly advertised.
No, no, I totally understand.
Councilwoman?
All right, so the point that I was trying to make is that we already voted on this first reading, we agreed with the majority of this ordinance, I was suggesting that we vote down the one on second reading, because this, this is where all the questions are coming up. So why would we accept this if we're not comfortable with this new language?
We're not, we have to go.
We're not going to accept anything tonight, but we have started the process of an ordinance, we approved it on first reading, we have to actually take a vote on second reading to either approve it or, or kill it. That's what we're talking about now.
Yeah.
And then once we do that, that's the first step. And then the second step is, we can talk about where we want to go from here. Does that sound like a plan?
Sure.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the table, we need to do a roll call vote. If, if we follow Mr. Kizer's advice, we need to vote no, at least three of us do.
Are you going to do a public hearing or no public hearing?
Oh, you're right, we have to do a public hearing.
But again, it's a leak.
If you're liking this, you can go for it. No, you can't, because it has to be advertised.
Yeah, so technically, this is a first reading document on second reading.
Right, exactly. And that was my intent, to have it on for first reading.
Thank you, yes.
Material changes.
The first one was up.
So, so Mr. Kizer, because we're in the process, it's been introduced, or there's been a motion to introduce it on second, then it sounds like to me, first, we have to kill it. If we, if we voted to approve it, then we'd have to have the public meeting. But if we vote not to introduce it on second reading, which is the motion pending, then we don't need a public meeting.
The reason I had suggested having the public hearing is because if there's anybody here who wants to speak on this and has some ideas about the language or strong feelings about the language, you hear about it. And I know there were a couple of people here tonight who spoke about it and wanted it to be passed tonight. So if they're still here, I don't think they are, but.
Mr. Dragon is still here.
So, so, you know, let, let Mr. Dragon speak if he wants to.
Or anyone else.
Or anyone else.
But I'm just saying, the process that we've used since I've been on the council is that we vote to introduce it, then we have the public meeting. If we vote not to introduce it and essentially kill it, then we're not required to do the public meet, a public hearing, but we can do that.
Right.
You don't mind hearing in front of the public?
Okay, we do what you want.
Absolutely, okay. Let's take the vote, and then after the vote, we will, if anybody would like to speak on this, they certainly are welcome. Does that sound like a plan?
Yep.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, let's take a roll call, please.
Councilwoman Casalino?
No.
Councilman Cirillo?
No.
Councilman Guarino?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
No.
Council President Krakovia?
No. So the motion passes, the ordinance that was approved on first reading at our previous council meeting is now dead. Long live the new ordinance. Okay, so at this point, as we're all agreed, if there is anyone from the public who would like to speak, please raise your hand, be recognized, come up, give your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Mr. Dragon, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please raise your hand.
Matt Dragon, thirteen Sheridan Avenue. Sorry, this gets a little complicated. So, I also don't have anything prepared. So I think the, I guess my, the thing I'd like to say is I'd like to open an invitation to all of the council members to speak with myself and other members of Essex Rising about this resolution. The, the second reading modified resolution is incorporated feedback both from our group to the mayor and the chief, as well as edits by a member of our group who is an immigration attorney, who is privy to what the ordinances are in other jurisdictions around the state of New Jersey, and I think some of the changes that were not mater, or were material changes were, were driven by her input. So I would love to have conversations with as many of you as are interested and try to get her in the room. But in, in general, the concerns with the original ordinance were making it as ironclad as possible to protect the information of the people who were applying for the cards, who were holding, excuse me, holding the cards, and tried to ensure that the card basically didn't carry any negative side effect, and trying to make sure that the, the card is considered a valid form of ID in the township, it's, it's valid for use for, you know, businesses that operate in the township, and obviously for township services, that no extra scrutiny or anything like that is coming upon someone solely by the fact they're, they're using this as their form of photo ID. So I think that, you know, I'm definitely interested in what, what the five of you have to sort of say about the changes that were introduced, and definitely if there's interest, you know, I emailed the council email address, so you all at least have my email, feel free to reach out to me as a point of contact for sort of future discussions. But as far as I know, everything that's in the modified ordinance, the mayor and the chief are okay with, so if we can somehow get ourselves closer to that one than the first one, that would be speaking for the group without having consulted the group. I think that would be more what, what Essex Rising was, was looking to accomplish in this ordinance. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dragon. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, I will close the, this portion of our discussion and open it up to those of us on the dais. I don't know if now would be an appropriate time to ask the chief to come up and give us some background on this, does that, would that be something people would like to, to hear in terms of, you know, the genesis of the entire legislation? I don't think we talked about that last time at the last meeting. And then maybe your perspective on, on how things changed here?
No, but I have, I have other papers. Yeah, I take this, it's highly available, it's the new one, with the changes highlighted. Thank you. The mayor had some citizen inquiries relative to the resident ID card and felt that it was a, an idea in the best interest of the residents of West Orange and asked to proceed in that direction. I had difficulty finding a company that would do it, a lot of unanswered emails from different vendors who make ID cards, and when I was at the State Chiefs Association, there's a particular vendor that I assume pays to have a table in the back, and he's there at every meeting, and I spoke with him, and I said, have you ever done anything like this? And he said, we're right now in the midst of doing, forgive me, I don't remember if it was Weehawken or Union City, but it was.
Union City, yes.
Union City, one of the bigger cities, and he said, I can't even embark on this right now with West Orange because that's such a learning curve for me and such a big process, but he said, it's going well, and the benefit to you, if you can wait, is that, you know, we'll, we'll find what our mistakes are and you won't be subject to them. So I still continued to look, I couldn't find anybody. Eventually, it came, you know, came time, a couple of meetings, and PSAP, or whatever their acronym is, they came along and had a couple of meetings and said they could do this for us. And there's two ways they do it, they can either do it where, which is better for us because we don't, we don't imagine we're going to get such a big volume of these cards, you can purchase the equipment and make them in-house, or they'll make them for you and ship them. So we had some meetings, and Essex Rising was privy to some of these meetings and conversations, and they were very concerned that there would be no, no database maintained, and they actually, at the vendor, had to go to their IT people, along with our IT people here, and figure out a way to do that, but they did come up with a protocol that would allow that to be done. So the ordinance was drafted, there was a lot of back and forth, I sat with the Board of Ed people and Superintendent Rutske, I had emails and conversations on top of the meetings, and we kind of finally got to a point where we felt comfortable with an ordinance, which is the ordinance that you adopted last time on first reading. After that meeting, I sat with Mayor Parisi and Matt Dragon, and I think there may have been some others in the room from Essex Rising, and they had some other issues they would like addressed, so they sent them to the mayor by email. Somehow, they got drafted into this ordinance, you heard Kenny's instructions, Mr. Kizer's instructions, that there should have been two separate ordinances. I have not had a conversation with the mayor to know that he is in fact comfortable with all this. I know that he did insist that gender be on the ID card, male, female, or undeclared. Someone would not have to declare their gender, but it would not be totally omitted. So I don't know for a fact that the mayor is comfortable with all these, these changes. I don't want to speak to that either way.
Could you, since you were part of the, I'm trying to figure out if there was a discussion other than with anyone else who offered the language besides Mr. Dragon. In other words, it sounded like you had a face-to-face with Mr. Dragon, and then got some email language that was just incorporated without substantial review and, and discussion among the people who were putting it together, is that?
Yeah, I think being summer and vacation schedules and so on, it didn't help matters.
Sure.
So it sort of got, it was submitted by Mr. Dragon, and it sort of got put into the ordinance, and that may be what the mayor wants, I don't know. Or maybe he would, you know, I know, I know he had the one issue that he, he mentioned, and there was communication back and forth only relative to that.
Okay.
The rest of it, you know, it's, there's, there's things in there that we'll be incumbent on the clerk's office to handle, not the police department, and I don't know that they have the staff to do it or not do it. So some of that hasn't really been thoroughly vetted.
That's actually one of my concerns, because there's only two and a half people, there's two full-timers and a part-timer in the clerk's office, and they're pretty darn busy most of the time, so if this is something that is going to be really popular, it might, it might be a strain of the resources, but did you do any sort of estimate or analysis to maybe project how much, how many of these cards might, you know, what the demand might be?
We're estimating, based on what the Recreation Department has done these in the past, so we're estimating like, you know, maybe between twenty-five and fifty.
A week, a month, a day?
No, probably a year.
Oh, okay.
The Rec Department still needs their equipment to produce the pool badges, which is the same one they do for the ID card, except if, if and when we ever draft this ordinance, this ID card would suffice rather than having a, you know, two different ID cards. Recreation Department won't do that.
So the Recreation Department was, was producing two cards, one, the card for the badges for the pool, and then another identification card?
Uh, yeah, it was basically, it looked the same, except that I believe it's, I've seen them, Billie show, Kao showed them to me, but I'm trying to remember, I think it just said, you know, resident ID, and then people could use that for recreation programs.
Okay.
There was some concern about the schools, but the schools, the school would accept this, or the Board of Education would accept this as a means of identification and saying, this is who I am, but that doesn't mean that you can enroll your children in school. They're, they're restricted by the law what they accept and don't accept. So it really, in their view, what they relate to me, it has no impact on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so my suggestion of our discussion from here is perhaps go through the changes that were made in this, just to see if we could get additional background, if, if council people were interested, or councilman, do you have a separate?
No, yeah, I can, I can add to the chief, and chief, thank you. It would cost, I guess we could generate in revenue a thousand dollars, and we're spending so many hours working on this, but God bless, you know, we're doing the people's work.
We'll never get back what we spent so far working on this, trust me.
Fifty ID cards for a year, at twenty dollars a piece is a thousand dollars.
Yeah, they're, well, we're not, that, that money goes to the vendor, we've got this, we've got this situated so that it doesn't cost, I mean, it's going to take a minute, literally, to, you know, do this in the clerk's office, and it's probably going to take no longer if somebody came in and asked for directions to get to the Board of Ed building. So, you know, from that respect, I don't think it's a big deal as, as far as the impact on staffing levels, but.
I'll get back to you when you finish this answer.
Sorry, I'm trying to thought with that.
It's okay, chief, I, I'll just finish my remark. And speaking of big deal, I mean, look, it's, it's a municipal ID, what can you use it for? Go to the bank, you can use that as an ID, healthcare services, public transportation, you want a New Jersey Transit pass, or you need to get into the pool. You know, those are the, the main mentioned items that the administration or the drafters believe that this municipal ID can be used for. I, there's really no mention of anything else. So again, we're talking about a thousand dollars in revenue, we're talking about four major functions. I, I don't know, I think we're overthinking this and just spending too, too many labor hours trying to address an issue that's really simple. With respect to residency, this is an identification card, this is not a proof of residency as it relates to the Board of Education. You, if you break it down between an identification form and a residency form, in fact, if you look at this from a residency perspective, it's very tight. You got to provide either like a deed, you have, if you're a homeowner, a deed, a tax bill, you have to provide a, some sort of like mortgage bill in order to be able to ascertain that you in fact do reside in the town. If you're a renter, a utility bill, water bill, cable bill, just like anything, it becomes really difficult to prove residency. So again, I think we're reading too much into this, and I, I just, just keep that in mind when you deliberate. Thank you, Council President.
I agree. Councilwoman?
I have a few questions for the chief. I mean, if Councilman Guarino wants to go first, that's.
No, you first, and then I'll ask the chief, okay?
Okay, so my big concern is, so I, I, you know, we've been debating this issue, so again, I spent ten years with registration at the school board, I sat through hundreds of, hundreds, hundreds of hearings. So basically, what happens with this municipal ID, yes, it can't just be used just to get in school. The law states that the school district would have to take the totality of information that is brought to them. So if a municipal ID is given, it will be the same as coming to them with a driver's license, so we better make sure that we do our homework before we issue this document out, because it will be an official document that they could use for entrance into the schools, one of the many documents. And if they're, you know, they have recourse where they could go out and do an investigation if they are suspect, and it's, you know, twenty, you know, we have to pay investigators to go sit on houses and whatnot, and go pay for the attorney to go do a hearing. So that, I, I, you know, if it's not done properly, it could not cost the township, but it could cost the school district one in the same tax bill. I was a little disturbed, and let me just go back a step, so looking at the other IDs, and I appreciate the attorney and all of you doing your due diligence, I, I started pulling online all the different cities, Union City, Newark, Plainfield, Perth, Amboy, all these cities that are having this municipal IDs. And with that, all of them asked for valid identification. So the first red flag I have on this ordinance is on page three, paragraph A, proof of identity. So, the first red flag I have on this ordinance is on page three, paragraph A, proof of identity. We now change this that we could accept unexpired documents. So, I have, you know, a big red flag with that. I can't accept anything that we would accept unexpired documents.
You mean expired.
I'm sorry, expired documents. It's not even that late tonight, we're doing pretty good. Expired documents. So, I have a big issue with that, because all these other cities are asking for, you know, valid ID, you know, valid driver's license, current visa. So, all of that is being asked for by the other cities. So, I can understand why our township can't, you know, ask for the same. So, I do have an issue with an expired document. As far as the privacy of the individual, I'm for that. I don't have an issue with that. I also don't understand, you're right, we're making this harder than it needs to be. I don't understand if the Rec was doing something that was so simple, and we were, I know Juan Pantado had worked with the residents and over 40 residents. He assisted in getting, for the Recreation Department. So, I don't understand, you know, where we had an issue with the policy that we just can't accommodate folks through department policy rather than issuing an ID, that I feel that will also be an issue for the clerk's office, not this week, not next week, but in time when folks from, you know, try to gain entrance to utilize this for school purposes, we'll inundate the clerk's office in about a year or so, because unfortunately, we're travels. And we did practice this exercise 10 years ago, or the township did, where it was in the police department, you know, my mother-in-law, Mary Ann, was, you know, unfortunately in charge of it. I had to hear it all the time. And folks were coming there that didn't, that weren't from the township. And they did inundate it, and they wound up sending them back to motor vehicles to get the non-driver's ID. It's always funny, even on this, when I was on the school board for residency cases, folks didn't bring their driver's license because they said they didn't have one, but yet they drove into the parking lot. So, you know, people, it's crazy, the stories I've heard through the years. So, if I sound a little paranoid, a little protective, there's good reason for it. You know, we saved millions of dollars with the practices that we implemented through the years. But this expired, I definitely can't have that language in there, and I have to look through the other. But I don't have a problem with folks' privacy, I just trying to protect us in another way. So, if we could maybe go over, or some of these other forms of identification, you know, chief, is there anything on here that you don't feel comfortable with that, you know?
Well, if you start on page one, it talks about, first of all, we'll have no database, so to protect the victims of domestic violence, we would have to have some type of, I would envision some type of database that we're protecting. Beyond that, the clerk's office isn't privy to that information anyway. I can't release that by law. Victims of domestic violence is a confidential matter. Some of these, you know, some of this language may have been borrowed from other towns where this ID card was done through the police department. It was my thought that because of some of the reluctance of the immigrant community to come into a police department, it may be better handled in a clerk's office.
Okay. They may feel more, oh, yeah, definitely than going to the police department. I agree. They would feel more comfortable. But wouldn't they feel more comfortable going to Juan after?
You've got to get that piss Billy first.
Yeah.
Councilwoman, just a couple of follow-ups to your first point. Further down in that Section A about proof of identity, there's also a deletion of the word "current" before the word "visa."
Yes.
So, I would think you would think that same about that as well?
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to flag that.
Thank you. And I do ramble, and it does say current visa on, like, here's Union City. They require a current visa, US or foreign passport, US driver's license, US state identification card. Now, you can, you know, I think we have that here, a consular identification card. So, you know, there are things on here that are here, so folks do have alternatives.
Councilwoman, through the chair, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Council President?
Sure.
Do you, I agree with her. I don't know, we haven't been given an explanation as to why we would accept unexpired documents from...
Expired.
I would like to hear that, if it's okay, as a follow-up.
Sure.
Please.
This was a request of Essex Rising that you would accept expired documents. There's also a provision in here that you would create some type, we would, the administration would create some type of alternative requirements for applicants who lack a permanent address. So, if you have somebody that has no address and they have expired foreign military cards, I don't know how you, I don't know how you successfully administer something like that, to be honest with you.
Right.
That would be the problem I would have.
Well, just to follow up on that, further on in that proof of identity section, it talks about, in addition to the documents in the preceding list, the administering department may designate alternative documentation acceptable. So, it looks like it's, anything could be.
And that's a problem, because, I mean...
Specificity.
I circled that clause, or any other documentation that the administration deems acceptable, because you can't give a public official unfettered discretion. If you're going to have discretion, you have, it has to be guided by objective standards that are spelled out in the ordinance. So, that language is a problem for me. As soon as I saw it, it jumped out, because it's in here a few times.
I marked it on that one, too. Basically, it says you're going to accept A, B, C, D, E, and anything else you feel like.
Which entry? I'm sorry, if you don't mind me asking through the chair, what section are we discussing?
We're talking now about Section Roman numeral V, proof of residency and identity, subsection A, proof of identity. It's at the top of the page three on the revised.
In my apologies, Council President. Councilwoman has had the floor previously.
That's okay.
I'm going to tangent.
No, it was a good point. You know, they're doing this at the school district just for educational purposes, you know, they have the, anytime they are not sure, the case gets given to the school attorney to make the call. So, you know, again, you know, we're giving this to the clerk's office. She's going to have to make, or, wait, there's Panama, it's in the clerk's office. You're going to, they're going to have to make calls, so you need also a process. If they're uncomfortable with documentation they're given, and they have questions, because I'm telling you, folks can get pretty adamant when they're coming to present documentation.
Sure, and there's the follow-up issue, which is, who do we have who is qualified to say whether this documentation that's offered is valid or is legal or whatever?
Council President, so then it sounds like, and then we start making exceptions, and once you make exceptions, then the whole thing...
Starts falling apart.
Falls apart. And with the Board of Ed, they're very specific. When you register or re-register, they spell out exactly what it is that you need to bring, which is what we're saying, same thing here. It can't just be an arbitrary piece of paper that happens to have your name on it, expired or unexpired.
And excuse me, I'm just thinking of these things, things are coming back to me. And when they are not sure of a residency, you know, the attorney looks at totality, and then they do a bed check. Now, I know Mr. Keough has worked with residents and on making sure that, you know, they have entrance into the pool and the rec services. So, I just want to make sure this is thought all the way through of what could happen, because, believe me, there are situations that will arise.
Well, can I, also to follow up, that we also passed ordinances about this registration Board of Ed again, about the certificate of occupancy and habitability, that there was always a follow-up if someone moved. So, though I circled everything that we just discussed in this proof of identity paragraph, I also look at the relocation. How do we monitor that? I mean, we did that through ordinances, that the property maintenance, re-registration process, the addresses were actually looked at. How do you know? The relocation out of township invalidates the West Orange Identification Card and shall be returned.
I have no idea, because we don't keep a database. We keep no record of the ID cards that were given.
I don't know how this gets administered.
Could I just make a side suggestion, that the council consider setting up an ad hoc committee of two councilpeople who we would make responsible for going through this with the administration and the Essex Rising people, not at a council meeting? I can understand why we want to try to put, make the sausage outside of a council meeting, because it can be very lengthy once we get here. But is the council interested in setting up a committee of one or two people that would be, you know, responsible for going through this?
Council President, I think we're doing well, discussing some of the questions that we have. Again, I think we're thinking too much. It's not that complicated. I mean, respectfully, you know, as much as we'll come out of a cereal box, you know, we're talking about, you know, go to the bank, or, you know, it's like, get a card from New Jersey Transit. It's not, it's not that complicated. I think we can work it out. And I agree with my colleague's position with respect to unexpired documents. And I can tell you, yeah, I mean, look, situations occur perhaps where, you know, someone can return to their place of origin because of threats, perceived threats. But, you know, I think the draft and the proposal is well-thought-out. It has a list of other options, if that's the case. And perhaps, you know, that's where the leeway comes in, but I agree with my colleague, and I would support that. I think we should just keep discussing. Maybe we'll get something that we agree with.
Councilwoman Castellino has the floor.
Well, chief, I just want to ask you, so what do you suggest should come out of Section A, then?
It's on page three.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Mr. Kizer has already pointed, excuse me for interrupting, but Mr. Kizer's already said that the language down there at the end of that section has to come out.
Yeah, okay.
And then that raises the issue, is there alternative language that is acceptable?
I hate this and...
And really, it's, you know, it's up to the legislative body if they believe, you know, current or expired identification cards would be accepted as a means or basis to obtain a resident ID card. You know, I personally don't have any skin in that game. It's up to you. I get the impression you're not in favor of it as a whole, which is fine, but that's, you know, that's not something I can really speak to from the administration standpoint.
Councilwoman, still have the floor.
No, I'll let my colleague speak. I'm still looking through the paperwork.
I think we can start deleting if we're discussing this, if we're, let's look at the expired or unexpired. I think expired has to go. You can't produce a document that's expired and expect that to be valid documentation. I think the document also has to be current, and the whole sentence about unless we're going to add the specifics on what the alternative documentation that would be acceptable, what else is there? We need to put that in specifically. So, I think those three items just in that paragraph would strengthen that paragraph.
Well, in line with what Mr. Kizer said, I think if you take out anywhere where it says, you know, anything that is discretionary, if that language is omitted, then it should be fine.
Well, it's that particular sentence that's underlined that should go.
Well, it's in here a number of times. Yeah, it's in here a number of times. It's going to have to be omitted in every instance.
Right.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
Well, not in that particular paragraph, I think that's been exhausted. The part about the relocation, I don't know how you, you know, people are...
Do you have a recommendation, Councilwoman?
I don't, because I don't really know how you, no, unless one of the other townships that, Michelle, that you saw, is there something in there about the relocation of a town?
I don't have their ordinance, I have their applications and what they require. I started reading ordinances, so...
Our attorney, our summer intern, Mr. Steven Van Callenberg, put together, I think in his packages, three or four of actual ordinances in the research that he did. But I haven't looked through them with this specifically in mind, but it might be something to go to.
I was looking from this from Manahawken this weekend, so I tried to do as much research as possible.
To the chair, what are the penalties, Councilwoman, to having a license when you've moved and it has a different address? What kind of process, the motor vehicle following like that?
Well, you have 10 days, I believe, right? 10 days.
Okay, that's a start, 10 days. Do we have an enforcement provision?
Well, there is, there's...
Do we have an enforcement provision? With respect to not returning an expired or misrepresenting?
No, in fact, we've taken out language that talks about if we suspect fraud, that could take some action. We've actually taken out that language. But there's no penalty for not coming back if you've moved out of town. And since we don't keep a, we don't keep any sort of list of...
There's state statutes that, you know, speak to government documents, so no matter what's...
We don't need that.
It's going to supersede it.
Okay.
Okay, so, it shall be unlawful to use his ID card, and any unlawful usage will fall under that citation?
I think that should be in there, if this is an ordinance that...
It certainly can, but I don't think it needs to be in there, is my point. It's covered by state statute.
But if someone is reading this and they're applying for a card, they should know that. We're making the assumption that there's a state law that we understand supersedes, but...
We're working on a lot of assumptions.
And you can put on the application. The application can have the state statute.
It's a lot of assumptions.
Just one at a time, please.
Sorry.
Chief, I'm sorry, I didn't hear...
The application can have the state statute at the bottom of it, you know, it's criminal, you know, you're subject to criminal charges and penalty for, you know, falsification or fraud.
Yeah, it should.
It should.
Read.
Probably in the bottom of the driver's license application, I would think.
I don't know, but the problem, one of the problems is if you include one statute like that, you have to include all of them. It doesn't make sense. It's a...
You're already required to do that. You're ordering the state statute over your dress. You don't have to say that. Well, it doesn't belong in here.
The plain fact of the matter is that this card has very limited use.
Thank you, thank you.
And so, a lot of that stuff just isn't very important, so I'm not, I have to agree with Councilman Cirillo with that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kizer.
Councilwoman, you have the floor.
No, go ahead.
Councilwoman McCarthy has the floor.
That was a...
Okay. Councilwoman?
People could use this for part of their entrance into the school district, so we have to be diligent.
That may be, I can't speak to, I'm not a school lawyer, I don't know what the laws with respect to that.
They have to take it.
I know we can't force this school to accept it.
But the school, under the statute of school law, they have to take what's ever presented to them, the totality.
Okay.
So, this will be, you know, I mean, it's just like a driver's license, so we need to make sure when we issue these that they're, you know, they're tight.
It's only part of, it's not only one thing.
You're right, and then they...
You can't just take this and...
Oh, no, 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 but what they'll do is, they'll do a bed check, and they'll spend our taxpayer dollars on the bed check.
Wait, 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 guys, 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 let's calm down, calm down. Mr. Sayers?
Councilwoman.
Yes.
Only one document.
You are correct.
They cannot let you into school with this document alone, period. End of conversation.
Just a second, let me give Councilwoman a chance to respond, please.
That's the law.
It's totality of information, you are correct. But what they do is, then they do an investigation, which costs taxpayer dollars, so, any case.
Anytime someone tries to commit a sin, you have to do an investigation.
Yes, yes.
You can't stop that. You can't stop it.
I have a simple question. What, so, other than, and I give Essex Rising, I commend them for advocating because of all what's happened nationally, my issue is, what has happened locally? Did we not let somebody in the pool? Because I know the school district is admitting undocumented students. It's the law, they have a procedure. Have we had an issue in town where somebody didn't get entrance?
Wait, 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 just a second.
Because we, you know, if it's a matter of change in policy, then we should change the policy.
Councilman?
Okay, I can answer that. Councilwoman, we've had senior citizens asking for a government, a town ID identification card for a while, on a municipal.
Okay.
Mentioned by your experience, which... Mentioned about your experience, respect, I respect you, your experience in the school board, but, you know, we've been debating or addressing or looking at this issue from a municipal perspective. So we have senior citizens that may no longer be able to drive, that need to go to the bank, open a bank account. So that's one constituency. We have folks that perhaps don't have, you know, don't drive, you know, my mother doesn't drive. She doesn't, she can go to motor vehicles and get a, you know, an ID.
Yeah.
But maybe she can just go around the pool and go to the town hall and see a Fattimo and get an ID, you know, to be able to open a bank account, to be able to have access to some of the healthcare, to use that as an ID, to be able to purchase a New Jersey Transit bus pass, to be able to enter into the pool. Okay? So that's a second constituency. Those folks that may not, you know, this is an alternative to a license or DMV issued identification card. In addition, we have folks that perhaps because of their status in the country, may use this as, for the aforementioned reasons, you know, they want to open a bank account. We have folks, we have folks in here that do not have access to certain legal documents that pay taxes, that can't enter into the pool because they don't have a license or a DMV, but they pay taxes, you know, at the same levels that we pay. So there's several different constituencies that we are, that we're trying to address and that we're trying to help out. And, you know, it's not only about the school system, you know, and all these supposed folks that are coming into the schools and, you know, we're going to have a problem. It's, like you mentioned, it's total, with respect to the school issue, it's totality of documents. This is only an identification. You also have to prove residency. And I'm sure that the school system's residency requirements are stringent because of the hard work that you put in, you and your colleagues have put in with the school board to our benefit as tax. Thank you for that. So that's my short, I'm sorry, my long-winded answer to your question as to, you know, why are we considering this proposal?
Okay.
Thank you, Council President.
Chief, I think you were trying to say a word about a couple minutes ago.
Just to reiterate, as I said earlier, you know, this only establishes your residency on the day you obtain it. You can move out of that house the next day and still have that ID card. The Board of Ed will only accept that as a means of identification, that the person holding that card with their picture on it says, "This is me," will not take it as a means of residency, only identification. They were adamant about that. And they said that's perfectly within their rights and what, you know, they're not here to speak, but I had many conversations and emails and meetings, and they're okay with this the way it was originally written.
Originally, yeah, with the verbiage on it, which I understand we can't have anyway because they would still be, they would still have to take it even if we wrote on, can't be used by West Orange Board of Education.
No, they were okay with, I mean, the original ordinance that you passed on first reading.
Yeah. But that language is off, and that's fine because it's, it's new.
I have a couple of questions, I guess, to run by Mr. Kizer. Down in Roman numeral section six, under confidentiality, the second paragraph down there, the first ordinance said, "The township shall make best efforts to protect the confidentiality of all municipal card applicants to maximum extent allowable by federal and state law." So that's being proposed to be deleted. And then it says, "The township shall not disclose any information about West Orange Identification Card applicants to any public or private entity or individual, including federal, state, or city immigration or law enforcement entities." Now, it seems to me, I raised this issue with Councilwoman earlier today, it seems to me, we can't say that we're not going to comply with whatever law that immigration or law enforcement entities request of us, can we?
Well, it may depend on how they request it. But at the end of the day, if we don't have the information, we can't provide it. Can't provide what you don't have.
Right, that's what I couldn't understand because we don't, we're not keeping any record of the...
You know, it's almost like the people who drafted this had some paranoia because it's, I mean, and the simple thing, if we don't keep records...
We can't provide them.
We can't provide them.
And that's what I tried to impart over and over again. There's a lot, I'm sure it was very well intended, but there's a lot of, you know, even the redundant, all township departments, I'm sorry, page four, C, up top, all township departments, including the West Orange Police Department. Why is that in there? All township departments, period.
Period.
We're one of, I'm...
And then up in the previous section at the top of page four, under section D, it says, "The township shall seek to expand the benefits associated with the municipal identity card, including encouraging eligible persons to apply for the card and promoting the acceptance of the West Orange Identification Card by banks and other public and private institutions."
Such as?
It's precatory. It's, how can you, how can you enforce that? It's like, and what's the clerk going to do? Go around to banks and say, "Would you please accept this card?" I mean, it's, it's kind of, you know, I don't get that aspect of it. Again, I didn't draft this, but I didn't understand that.
It doesn't belong in the ordinance. It may be well intended, once again, and maybe not a bad thing for Susan Anderson to publicize and put out there, but I don't think it belongs in the ordinance.
So, so, I'm sorry, that's not my turn to speak.
That's the two things that just flew out at me. Councilwoman? Just a second, if Councilwoman has, I think, requested the floor.
No.
Councilwoman Castellino?
No, I just, I mean...
Councilwoman, excuse me.
So what's our next stop with it, our next step with this? Are you going to look at this again and revise it or withdraw?
I mean, look, I didn't really want to get involved with this, but...
But you're pretty good, you're pretty good on it.
I don't think I volunteered.
If I, if I have the version in Word or whatever, you know...
I can give you everything I have on it.
So I will run through it and take out what I think is either unnecessary or bad language and distribute it to everybody. And if you would, one at a time, only to me respond and not to everybody else, so you're not breaching the Open Pub Means Act, I can probably, over the course of several days, put a version together that...
I have a question.
I just want to follow up on this as long as you can. Is that what you want to ask about?
No, I have something to ask.
Okay, totally separate, okay, okay.
Totally separate.
So, again, I'm open to the process we want to do. I had suggested creating a committee, but I, it doesn't sound like, Mr. Kizer, you're including the Essex Rising people and their immigration lawyers. So I don't know whether that, that suffices because we haven't really heard from them why they wanted to put in a lot of the language that they put in, so...
Well, they said last time, or might even articulate it nicely this evening. They're concerned.
I can send a copy to them as well.
Okay.
You know, probably makes sense to do it after we've come to, after it's been distilled, but I'm always happy to listen to people and their arguments, but I, you know...
Okay.
If somebody's got a really good argument, why is something needs to be included?
Of course.
Are we agreed that that should be the next step? That Mr. Kizer look at it?
I think we should include it in the cereal box.
Is there anybody who disagrees with that offered process?
I agree.
Are you about to do...
I have to ask a question.
Okay.
I have this very, very basic question. And Chief, you can answer this, or Mr. Kizer, correct me if I'm wrong, and I heard it mentioned here tonight. The state already has an identification card, right, through motor vehicle? Let me just ask a question. That is accepted. Why are we reinventing the wheel here?
Making it more convenient.
I can't answer that question.
I mean, why? If the state already has a program or something that's accepted within state statute, before you said, I mean, if there are other reasons that certain groups don't want this, then saying, fine, I can understand, I understand, but I'm saying, is New Jersey Identification Card, not driver's license, is that accepted? Is that accepted identification?
Yeah, it's all...
It's a, yes, it's in New Jersey, it's an accepted...
Okay, so residents could use that to go open a bank account? They can go use the town pool, stuff, yada, 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 right?
Yes, I would just suggest, as Councilman Cirillo spoke about, you know, people...
And I'm only bringing this up, I'm not saying, but I'm saying, usually like Councilman Cirillo said, why are we...
The county also offers one.
Right, so why are we reinventing the wheel? Why are we doing another process, sticking another thing in the process? Sorry, Councilman.
To make it more convenient for residents.
Chief.
It's easy for me because I work for the mayor and the mayor wanted this done. As I always say, as long as it's not illegally moral or unethical, it's my job to get it done.
No, I'm only saying, because the fact of the matter is, if there's something that's , and if the county does it already too, why are we doing something totally separate?
It seems to be...
And I'm sure the county will come here...
Well, it seems to be something that our residents, even the residents who are aware that there's a state and county identification available to them, still want, and it's at no, it's really at no cost to the town. Just $20 goes to the vendor and that's it.
Right, and Council President, but Chief also, and Mr. Kizer, I'm saying is, and is the data and information protected and done the same way that it's being written here? Or is that...
The data's gone. Once it's sent, it's, and the card is manufactured, the data...
So it's gone. So the data can't be, they can't pull the data. They can't pull the data and use it to report, okay? So just in my own, same thing, why are we doing this? If it's already a state and county program that avails residents for identification cards, why are we doing this?
Because the residents have made it known to the mayor?
What I'm saying is, they made it known to the mayor.
One at a time, one at a time, wait, wait, wait. Councilman Guarino has the floor, please.
No, I mean, I'm just saying...
I guess in a nutshell, it's your prerogative to vote against it if you don't feel it's...
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, but I can yield the floor to Councilman Cirillo, I mean...
The short answer is, not everyone can meet the six-point...
Exactly.
Okay, not everybody can meet the six-point. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Kizer, were you about to say something?
I was...
Thank you.
Suggest that Mr. Cirillo had the answer and...
There you go. That's all I wanted.
And the purposes of this municipal ID card, the stated purposes are much less ambitious than what you would do if you went to get your driver's license or the related ID card, you know?
I see some other things too, but that's...
For example, you can't take this ID card and drive.
No.
You know, so it's much more limited.
But you can't take New Jersey, I'm sorry, Council President, you can't take New Jersey Identification Card and you can't drive. It's all I'm saying, but I understand. Does Councilman Cirillo answer to my, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman.
And to Mr., to Councilwoman's point, that's why I'm a little paranoid, is because we are asking for less for this, and that's why I'm afraid some folks from out of town may get wind of it and eventually try to use it. So, that's my concern.
Councilwoman?
Just to what Michelle's saying, that we're asking less compared to the county and the state?
Yes. The way it's right now.
Most definitely.
But, but, but the county and the state has more credibility than this does. Like I'm telling you, you should put this card in a cereal box.
No.
Okay, or you, it's like my G.I. Joe card when I was a kid.
You had one?
Yes, I did. Used to love G.I.
I have one too.
I think Tracy's fine.
Okay, so enough, but okay, thank you.
So have we talked this out?
Yes, I think it's in Ken's hands.
So we should like Ken's, like Mr. Kizer, sorry, Mr. Kizer, one at a time should talk to Mr. Kizer.
I'm going to try to do this as quickly as I can, just to get it out to everybody and see where we're at.
Okay, appreciate it. Sorry about that.
So Chief, if you can send it to me in Word format or...
Form where I have it.
And I need my copy that I get you back.
It's not even 9:30, we did so well tonight.
Hey, don't say anything.
Okay.
We didn't get to pending matters yet.
I was going to say, if we dispose of the ordinances, we're now down on the agenda to pending matters, new matters, council discussion, which seems like we just did for about 45 minutes. But does anybody have any other issues they want to?
Oh, I do. Sorry, Mr. Sayers. So, over the summer, there was an accident on Main Street with the front of the oak barrel that the truck overturned, and the asphalt went flying across the street to the other side of Main Street, and it appears it still needs to be cleaned up. I mean, where's that at? Is, I heard the truck, is that issue still being investigated or...
I have...
Yeah, because it looks horrible.
I've gotten the accident report.
Well, my concern is the cleanup. No, I heard what happened, but the cleanup on it...
I can send you the emails that I sent probably as much as recent as two weeks ago. Jack's office, Bonnie's involved for the insurance purposes. I have traffic working with the store owners, said that there's a subrogation claim, that they have to go through their, I'm going to say homeowners, but their insurance or commercial businesses. We're going to get it all cleaned up, everything's going to be done. You know, fortunately, there's, there's like some type of a hit and run or anything, but it's all going to be done. Joe Pelosi pointed it out to me and made me aware of it.
Yeah.
And I immediately got right on it, I'm going to say, two weeks ago, right before I went on vacation. So if you want, I'll forward those emails to you tomorrow.
No, no, I just want to make sure it's taken care of because it just looks horrendous. I figured insurance, something to do with that.
I've been to the local traffic, working with the, finding out who the business owners are to make sure it's fixed, because I said, you know, they have to do this and strike white irons hot, why this is an open case for the insurance company, because, you know, if they wait a long time and the zoning comes around and says this place is a mess, it has to be cleaned up, nobody's going to want to hear that. Well, you know, that's from an asphalt truck two years ago. It's got to, you know, it's got to be done immediately.
Okay, thank you.
I'm pretty comfortable and confident it'll happen relative to something.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilman?
Yeah, Council President, I just want to let the council know that I've met with some residents about the three ordinance that was initially, we discussed a few meetings ago. So I've spoken with the mayor about some proposals coming through. I don't know if we started working on some of those amendments, but I just want to make sure, in the interest of transparency, that it's out there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so there'll probably be some comments coming from residents and council people with the three...
Just to follow up on that same meeting, the, there will be additional information coming out on the diseases and the emerald ashbores and the ash yellows and everything that came out of that discussion at our last meeting. So there are policies in place now because it's so rampant here in Essex County.
Wow.
Anything else?
Figure issue.
Anything else from the administration?
No.
Okay. We're down to number 12, adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I will entertain a motion.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So...